Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the February 10th Committee of the Whole. You all have in front of you the agendas, or any additions or deletions to the agenda is circulated. If not, it entertain a motion to approve the agenda as circulated. Moved by Counselor Daniel Allen, seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Motion on the floor to approve the agenda as circulated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. Is there any declarations of conflict interest in this agenda? If there is, please speak up when the item comes up. Item number four, Presentations. We have us with us today, Michelle Amiro from the CBDC Yarmouth. So you may come down and please turn on your microphone by hitting the red button. I'll turn it on, and the minute it's lit up solid red, you can start up. There you go. The floor is yours.
Excellent. Oh, and that's my clicker too, isn't it? The presentation. I wasn't sure what I needed to bring with me here, so I'll put that aside. Thank you, everybody, for allowing me the chance to speak to you today. So first of all, the reason I came out today, or requested your ear, I guess, and by the way, this is the first presentation I've done, non-Zoom, in approximately, who knows, like nine months or so, so, you know, just, it's a little bit different. Let's just say that. So two reasons, the main reasons I reached out to have a presentation to you today was obviously, the first one, to introduce myself, and the second one was to talk to you about our programs and services, so that when you're out and about talking to your community members, you're aware of what we offer, and if we can make a connection to somebody, obviously, economic development and job creation are hot topics usually, and we want to be able to move people in the right direction and help them out as best we can. We all have the, we all want to help see our communities prosper, so we feel like we can help each other out here. Ultimately, we want to make our small businesses grow and support them as best we can. All right. Great. So you may be asking yourself, what is a CBDC? Well, Community Business Development Corporation is what it stands for, and we wanted to let you know that we're a nonprofit organizations, and we help foster economic development, as I mentioned, in Yarmouth County. That's our jurisdiction. We do it via financing programs, we do it with training programs, as well as we offer some business counseling as well. And both, all of our services are available in both official languages. Let me go through this. You guys all had a chance to review this presentation prior to? Sure, great. So a brief history about what CBDC Yarmouth is, is that we've been around for 35-plus years. I think this year is our 36th year, and over this time, we've invested lots of money into our community, and the number 34 million seems like a large number, especially when you're looking at smaller investments that we do, and the average size of our loan is approximately $40,000. So that's lots of investments in our small business community. Me and the staff that operate in our, in our office down on Water Street, myself, our financial administrator, Tricia, and the bottom three are the folks that deal with the clients on a regular basis. Christina, Shane are economic development officers. They would deal with a client if they had a loan, or an application of that sort, and Jose is the Self-Employment Benefits Project Officer. I'll talk more about that program in just a bit. So this is our tagline, for anybody that's thinking of what CBDC does. In a nutshell, we do financing, we do training, and we have the ability to give some advice. A little more detail about what we do. The main program we offer is our financing piece, and we lend maximum, loans up to a maximum $150,000. What common misconception about our loans is that, that we are only for startups, but that is, you know, incorrect. We do any sector, any size, any business model. We take chances on the people who've been turned down by traditional financial institutions, and we offer flexible repayment terms, so like seasonal schedules, or flexibility with a repayment term. We've been coined a patient lender, a non-traditional financial institution, so just remember, we're not only for startups. If you look at the graph that's up there, over half of what we've done last fiscal year was, was loans to existing businesses. So I think, oh, also on this slide, it's my responsibility to change it, sorry. Also on this slide, you'll see Christina and Shane, so I've tried to correlate who does what on the slides, just so that you have a familiar face. Also, what differentiates, I think it was mentioned on one of the other previous slides, was that our board is a diverse board of directors, and they approve all the loan applications. So decisions about loans in Yarmouth County are made by people who live in Yarmouth County, and we feel that's a very important piece. Over the last few months, we've been very busy, working with a regional recovery fund, and this is still available. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about it, but I do want you to know that it is still available. We're going to be working on round three of the funding coming down shortly. It's not 100% sure how, what it's going to look like, but once we do know, it'll be available on our, on our social media pages and on our website, cbdc.ca. Just remember that if anyone's been having any businesses, have been having any problems with cash flow, and maybe they weren't eligible for the traditional CBA loan with the banks, then they certainly can come to us, and we're going to help them out as best we can. I'm going to go forward for one slide here. Another way we support startups, this one is specifically for startups, is through the program called Self-Employment Benefits. Basically, it is the closest thing that we have to a grant. Some people call us up and say, we have, do you have grants? This is the closest thing we have. So you can, if you can, sorry, if you have a tie to EI, then you can, you can get these benefits for a period of up to 46 weeks, and there's no penalties associated with this when you make some business income. So participants can concentrate on their business, and not necessarily paying the bills, feeding the family, that kind of thing. We feel it's a very, very good program. It's been very successful, and there's also a training piece, where people who are participants can have access to business management training, which also helps them succeed in the long run. Going to go back to training. Just wanted to let you know that training is a big piece of what we do at CBDC, and some of the programs we have are, one of them is called the Entrepreneurial Training Fund, but I did want to just let you know that this, the training will cover 90% of the cost, so bookkeeping, marketing, HR, any of those types of things. If anybody you speak with needs this type of training, please send them down, and we'll help them, help them find this type of training. It's a very small cost to them, 10% of the total cost. We also have consulting advisory services. Those are for bigger, non-startup businesses, and people can access up to $5,000 to get a consultant in to do a diagnostic, or to do a development marketing plan, those types of things. Obviously, we, the tagline financing, training, advice, we certainly like to give advice or make referrals out to necessary agencies, if that's the case. All these services are all available with no cost to the, to the client. And you may have a question as to where we are and how you access our programs and services. Well, we're at Pier One, downtown Yarmouth, with a big blue building, and we're open Monday to Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. You can drop by, or just to avoid disappointment, and if somebody's busy, it may be best to give a call and make an appointment. I certainly would like to invite you all down if you wanted to take a tour, just to become more familiar with our, with our premise, building facilities, I guess, and if you want to think about business, you can think CBDC, and please, if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
All right, everyone, have any questions for Michelle? Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, you have the floor.
Yeah, I was interested in the board that approves the loans.
Yes.
Can you just, I mean, not people, but just the composition of the board, just out of interest?
Sure. We have a board, yeah, we have a board of 10, well, we can have up to 12. Currently, we have 10, and they're made up of all jurisdictions, like, so the whole geographic area. We have people from the municipality of Yarmouth, we have some people from municipality of Argyle, of course, and the town, and they're made up of just a cross-section of multiple different professionals and/or entrepreneurs, big entrepreneurs, of small businesses and bigger businesses and that type of thing. So it's a fairly good cross-section of individuals on that board. No problem.
I believe the next one on the queue would be Counselor Lauren. I believe the next one on the queue would be Counselor Lauren Cushing. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Michelle. I am very familiar with your, with your activities, and I know it's been very busy down there. I've seen it over the years, because.
Yes.
You remember me from here.
I do. I certainly do.
Yes. Now, the question I have, you talked about the self-employed benefit program, and you must have been on EI or on EI. So if you're going to start a business yourself, be self-employed, and you've never been on this, you don't qualify. Is that correct?
Right, so it has to be a new business, first of all. And there is a few intricacies, I guess, involved with that program. We don't make the eligibility on it, is we partner with Nova Scotia Works, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that organization. We partner with them in our building as well.
Okay.
And so we work together to determine whether or not, and there's many different ways to find the eligibility.
All right.
So we just briefly say there has to be a tie to EI, but there's many different ways to find that tie.
Okay.
So, so, yeah.
Yep.
It's, it's an interesting thing, and there seems to be always a new way to get on that program, which I feel like is very important.
It is.
Because, because it is an excellent program, and the more people that can get on it, the more success we can see in our entrepreneurs, for sure.
Yeah, I know you guys have done a really fantastic job of speaking with Chris in the past.
Yes, yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
And you got a good, a good board, too.
Yes, thank you.
I don't know who's on it now, but it used to be good.
Yes, yes.
So I'm sure they still are, so.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
No problem, thanks.
Any more questions for the council? Staff? I got to remember to turn my mic on. Any more questions of council or staff? Well, Michelle, one thing that I'm really happy to hear is that you guys are working with businesses that would not have, would not have made, made the cut to get a loan for businesses and stuff like that, and I think that's very important.
Yes.
Every, every individual is different, and I'm glad that they have at least a path to help them open up.
Yes, I agree. Thank you so much.
All right, on that note, we have no more questions. Thank you very much, Michelle, on behalf of staff and council, and we may take you up on that offer. Do you have COVID restrictions down in your building, or?
We, we don't have them at the moment. We were closed, like, you know, to the public, and only had appointments coming in, but right now, we are, we can come in, the public has access, so certainly, just have to wear a mask and sign in, so.
All right.
Yeah, it'd be great if you could all come down.
I might take you up on that offer.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Good stuff. Do I just press off here?
Yeah, you can just press that, turn it off. Thank you very much, Michelle. Since we're following COVID-19 protocols, the CAO is going to go wipe down the microphone in the area. The next person that's on our agenda is item 42, which would be Roger Devine. And anyone that may be watching this, you may not, or may be aware, that we're also following COVID-19 protocols here. Beside me here, you'll see partitions, so if you see me, forget to turn on my microphone. When you turn off a microphone, the voices come through the speaker, because when councils are speaking, I have a lot of trouble sitting up here in my little cubicle, so. Especially when Counselor Allen, Counselor Hurlibur, Counselor Hilton, and Deputy Warden and COO speak, I can hear Counselor Cushing and Counselor Durkey quite well, because sort of have a line of sight, but the others, I don't. Their voice seems to bounce off before I hear it. So Roger, welcome. Just turn on your microphone, and I'll fire you up. You're live. You have the floor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good morning to all the counselors. I just have a brief, just a brief report for you this morning. I'd like to, just, just an update on the development department. In terms of billing permits, we did have a busy year in the development office in 2020. Despite the fact the office was closed in the spring of last year, we managed to keep the construction projects moving. We had to think outside the box, and when it came to service delivery and inspections. The fall created further challenges for delivery of service, and we had created a plan, which was approved by the CAO, so that we could spend more time in the office, working on files and keeping the paperwork flow moving. Subdivisions. Subdivision applications continue to come in, and there have been some growing pains with the new subdivision bylaw, which became law in August of 2020. I have been working with our interim planner, Morris Lloyd, and our new planner, Caroline Robinson, to find ways to fairly administer the bylaw, especially Part 7, which involves parkland dedication. Mr. Lloyd had advised that there are usually changes required with new bylaws, especially bylaws that are as important as this one, right after they had been adopted. In terms of billing codes, there haven't been many major changes with the Nova Scotia Billing Code regulations this year. The current billing code that we go by is the 2015 National Billing Code of Canada. There's been no word on when the new billing code will be coming in. Typically, the code cycle is every five years. Improved accessibility is something that we know is coming, and we haven't heard anything from the province on this yet. The current codes already have robust accessibility requirements, which we do enforce. As far as budget, we have had, I have had early discussions with, regarding the department's budget, with the finance officer for the coming year, and we are on budget so far this year, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Is there any questions, comments from council? Counselor Lauren Cushing, you have the floor.
Thanks, Roger. Did you say there's been no major changes in the billing code since 2005?
Well, the, the 2015 National Billing Code of Canada is what we're going by now.
Yeah.
When I first started here, the 1995 code was in effect, and that stayed in effect for 10 years.
Yeah.
Then the codes got updated every five years, but I think probably due to COVID and everything else, there's been a delay.
So in saying that, billing code back in the mid-'60s is much different than it is now, correct?
Well, I thought so, for a number of years, but when I looked, we do have copies of all the billing codes going back as, pretty much as long as we've had billing codes. We have those copies, which we have to refer to, especially when we're doing fire inspections. And the most stringent requirements for sprinklers, firearm systems, and that, haven't really changed. There's some minor changes, but the, the overall scope of the code has pretty much stayed the same.
Okay.
Each code cycle, of course, different requirements may come in, such as how you build a stairway, or different kind of framing and requirements, but they're subtle changes. The biggest change that happened in the last number of years was the Energy Code of Canada, where you have to put in a lot more insulation. So the thinking changed there. The thinking changed from, as long as you could put a heating system in a building that could heat the building, they weren't so concerned in the code about how much insulation you put in. But after Kyoto, they changed that thinking to, we're going to put a lot of insulation in, so you can heat the building with a very small heat source, same with cooling.
So you're saying that if you're going to renovate a building, it's going to be brought up the code for the insulation part, for the heating part?
Exactly. So the code, the way the codes apply is that the code applies to any work being done. So if something already exists, of course, we don't, we're not concerned about that, but anything that's changed has to meet the new code.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Devine, thank you for the presentation. It was excellent. And just, just a question, because I have had some concern voiced from residents in the municipality of Yarmouth around the, around the subdivision bylaw, and specifically about, about that parkland requirement.
Yes.
Can you maybe talk a bit more about that, and will you, will you be thinking about or pondering the possibility of coming for, to council for revisions and that, or?
Well, we've started early conversations about that, and I've talked to the, our interim planner and our new planner, Caroline, about that. I was talking as recently as yesterday with Caroline about that. She's prepared a brief, which I think will be coming to the PAC. I read through it, and we went back and forth with some smaller, small changes and clarifications, but I think she'll, she will be presenting at the next PAC with some very interesting suggestions, and what I saw of it, it was a very well-prepared brief, so more is coming. Although, as of today, I just, I enforce what we have, and that is that, in terms of parkland dedication, and Part 7 of that subdivision bylaw, council has the ultimate say on whether we accept a 5% fee, 5% of land, or another piece of land, or a combination thereof. So more is on its way for you.
Is there any other questions of council, staff? You guys are quiet today. Thank you very much, Roger. One thing that I was going to mention was the growing pains with the, with the new subdivision bylaw is, as I've learned over the past 12 years, I've sit around the table, is sometimes motions and bylaws have consequences, and sometimes there's unintended consequences to that, and I was one of the first ones, I think, that received a call in regards to that subdivision bylaw, and I quickly contacted staff, and we're, we're working on it, and we're working on it exponentially, and it's going to be coming forward to PAC very soon, so.
And I appreciate the fact you're, you're looking into this, and hopefully will address some minor things. However, we'll make it work, and we'll work with everyone to communicate how the new bylaw works.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
All right, thank you very much, Roger. Next on the docket would be Frank Grant. You need no introduction. Hit your red button on your mic, and I'll turn you on. It must have a magnetic personality or something, Frank. You have the floor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Warden Cunningham, and thanks for the opportunity to give an update on Yarmouth Recreation Activities after nine and a half months of dealing with COVID-19. In recreation, we all know that we're all about getting people together, being active, and this fiscal year has been very challenging in doing those things, but we have persevered, we have done what we can. I was thinking the other day, when I was putting my report together, about my little opening preamble, and when we were in lockdown back in March and April, one of the things that the province did was they shut down parks and playgrounds, and what we've been doing through COVID-19 is trying to encourage families and people to get outside, use our trails, use our playgrounds. So after that initial shutdown, I got to give kudos to a lot of recreation folks around the province, is that we worked with Dr. Strang's office, we lobbied, and yes, there was a fear that COVID-19 could be transmitted by hard surfaces like swings and park benches, but they listened to us, that people need that type of thing for their own mental health and physical activity. And when we had other restrictions along the way in the last nine and a half months, one of the things that stayed open were our outdoor facilities, like parks and playgrounds. So it has been a trying year, you know, I won't deny that, that we have been limited to what we can do, but based on the gathering limits that the province has imposed on us, we have tried to do some things. We have got people together in small groups. We have got people together on their own time. We have worked with, and this is another big component to dealing with a pandemic, a lot of our community organizations were not operating, so we have worked with those groups that have been able to stay open and do some great things, and we're looking forward to a better year this coming fiscal year. So just an update on some of the things that we've been working on. One of the things, a big thing, and I congratulate council on, on their work and initiative towards the Lake Milo Active Transportation Project. Very happy that this is going forward, very happy that I'm part of the steering committee, and looking forward to a great project, something that's been talked about in the community for, I would guess, close to 20 years, and we finally see movement towards some development and making our area more active. Some of the projects we've been working on, and we have submitted to respective finance departments, we're looking at a Phase 2 of Milo renovation, and just an update, our, our capital projects are dealt with by each municipal unit, so they're not a part of our joint recreation budget. They are dealt with by the town and the municipality separately. So we have a number of projects that I've listed, basically, from the town and municipality. We, we want to do Phase 2 of Lake Milo's renovation. Phase 1 involved a washroom renovation of the lower level, and storage spaces and offices. So Phase 2, we're looking at new flooring, new doors, new fire escape, and kitchen renovations, and that's been proposed to the town of Yarmouth. We are looking at putting accessible public washrooms at Gateway Park, and that's another town project. Public outdoor drinking fountains, another town project. I have suggested that, that we, that is on the books, but really not a good project to be looking at during a pandemic. As we know, in the schools, a lot of the drinking fountains within school systems are shut down for obvious reasons, but we're looking at putting some public drinking fountains around at popular areas around the town. Bike repair, fix-it stations. That was an idea that's, that's come up and been proposed, so in high biking areas, there may be a small station where you can get air, get a couple tools, and be able to fix a tire quickly. For the municipality, what we have proposed are rotary center upgrades. We're looking at replacing the patio doors with double doors, doing some washroom repairs, and adding some showers. We are also in need of a new full-size tractor. Our Massey Ferguson has long outlived our, its life cycle, I guess is a good way to put it, and to put some perspective on that, when I was a summer student, working for leisure services at the time, back in 1995, I think the tractor was one year old. So that's what we used when we were building the Fochu River Trail that encircles the recreation complex. Road repairs, if anyone has been up to the Rotary Center, whenever we have freezing in thyme. If anyone has been up to the rotary center, whenever we have freezing in thyme, the road is a mess. Right now, it's okay because we've got snow down. But just a few days ago, it was quite muddy and ruddy. So our plan is to continue from where we did road repairs coming into the park by the Public Works and Recreation Maintenance Building and continue that all the way up to the rotary center. And the last one is we're looking at putting a heat pump in the soccer clubhouse below. We've had some issues with some equipment, just with the dampness and that sort of thing. We've had some issues in the spring summertime, very similar to what we've had at the rotary center with certain types of days where we've had lots of humidity, that the, the floor gets slick. And with kids having soccer cleats on inside the washroom areas, we're, we're thinking that the heat pump may help with controlling some humidity and temperature and also making the clubhouse more viable this time of year. If there's some heat in there, meetings and planning can happen for, for club soccer. Just a few other things. We are hoping that this year we'll be able to offer a higher complement of programs and activities. We've just had a restriction, I guess, relaxed. So we're hoping that we will have a, and we're planning for a regular complement of day camp and sports camp and leadership camp and Milo activities and those sort of things. So one of the things we've been doing is just trying to improve our database. We have made some changes with our online presence during COVID, which has been a great thing, that we are doing more online registrations and taking e-transfer payments. We are going to encourage people to continue registering online, continue using e-transfers. Not that we don't want people to come see us, but it's just becoming, as most of you know, it's just becoming an easier way to do business if people can just click and register and pay with their mobile device. We are always looking for partnership opportunities. But again, partnerships are limited during COVID because a lot of our community groups are, are not operating or operating in a revised way. But one of the things high on our list is to work with our Mariner Center and partner with them in any way that we can as far as helping them with programs, advice, any support at all that we can give. And we've helped them with an indoor walking program. And so far, since it started on January 11th, and so far, they have a regular group coming into the building and walking in a safe area where they don't have to worry about ice, icy sidewalks or bad weather. Again, we are anticipating having Canada Day events and fireworks and a full complement of, of summer staff. So we have submitted applications for Canada Day and Canada Summer Jobs. And both of those agencies are very open, depending on our, our situation with COVID, on if we get approved to do X amount of things and we can't due to the pandemic, then they're both open and receptive to working with us to make things happen maybe a little bit differently than what we've proposed. Communities use of schools. We, we have not been in any school gymnasium since the pandemic hit. And just before the Christmas break, we were notified that, by the Tri-County Regional Center for Excellence, that we are permitted to use gyms only. The timing of that with the timing of school getting out and then the delayed back-to-school in late January has curtailed that a little bit. But we are still planning to start up with gym bookings next week at our five community schools. Staffing plans have been challenging. We, we are still looking for a few school supervisors in some locations, but metal fields will start up next week. And as soon as we get a couple other staff in place, we'll be, we'll be ready to go there. The major change for community use of schools is that the province has said there are no fees for gym rentals. So that's great. It has, we've got a long list of requests for times and gym activity. And so the one thing that we can do is any costs that are incurred for our staff to open and close and sanitize, we can be reimbursed by the Center of Excellence for any costs that we incur. So, so that's a positive thing. And again, I commend the, the choice of the province in doing that because we know people have, have not been as active. And by, you know, taking the, the fees out of there, it should make a big difference. Disc golf. We've had some inquiries about trying to put a disc golf course in. And for those that don't know what disc golf is, it's basically a, a round basket on a post and a frisbee that you, basically, it's like playing golf. You, you throw the frisbee a number of times and try to get close enough to throw it into the basket. So we have ordered three portable disc golf baskets and some starter kits. And our plan this spring and summer is to introduce the sport in a number of, of different locations. We have to have wide-open areas or areas that you can throw a disc safely, away from anyone walking or doing other activities. But I think by introducing the sport a little bit, having the discs in a lockbox for people to try may grow the, the interest and maybe open up an opportunity to look for a more permanent location where we can maybe put a nine-hole course in. One of the things that I have had discussions, I think it was last, last year with the golf course, there are golf courses in North America that allow disc golf to happen on the golf course at the same time as golfing. So that's something rolling around in my head that it may, there may be an opportunity to partner with the golf course and put some disc golf baskets alongside regular golf holes. So that's an opportunity that we're looking at. And then also upcoming strategic planning sessions with both councils and the Mariner Center is happening in February, March. And the last thing I wanted to mention was Gail Muse, our admin assistant, will be retiring at the end of March. And she has been with the municipality for 41 years. And I, I think maybe out of those 41 years, there was a year that was not with the Recreation Department or less than a year. But she will be retiring. So the whole month of March, we're going to be planning to embarrass her on her way out now. But we'll be, we'll be missing Gail and, but we'll be moving on to, to other, other things. And we just want to wish Gail well in, in her retirement. And when she, when she advised us, I, I told her that it's not a bad thing to be retiring. Retiring is a good thing. She's worked her whole life and, and she's able now to retire and enjoy her retirement year. So I did attach in my report, an update on our budget. Everything is there. I put a few notes at the bottom. I know how much everyone loves numbers, but the middle column is our year-to-date that shows us where we are as of February the 3rd. We are tracking well. Again, a lot of the things we planned to do did not happen or it happened in a different way. But if there's any questions or anything, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
All right. First one up on my docket would be Counselor Sheri Horbert. See if it works. Yes, it does.
Thank you for the presentation, Frank. I commend you and your staff for the challenges as we've all faced. And I think of, you know, some that come to the forefront of figuring out how we're going to gather people but not gather people. And I think you've done an excellent job so far. And I'm excited to hear some of the things like gyms being open and, you know, some new opportunities for the community. A couple of questions. Are you still rent, or sorry, lending snowshoes or is that a no-go with COVID?
We, we are renting snowshoes and cross-country skis. We have a limited supply.
Yep.
We have more snowshoes than skis. And really, snowshoes are something that anyone can really use with very minimal experience on them. Cross-country skis are a bit more difficult for a novice person. But we, now that we have snow, we have been loaning some out. I think three went out yesterday and we have a number of requests for today. So when they do go out, before they come back in the building, we make sure that we, we sanitize all the equipment that has gone out.
Okay. So the loan process or the ask is really the same as it has, was before COVID, during COVID?
Yes. Yeah. It's just a simple sign-out. There are no fees to any, any equipment that we have. If someone wants a basketball or a volleyball or anything like that, that we have in storage here, our philosophy's always been if, if it's in storage and someone wants to use it, we'll loan it out.
Perfect. Thank you. And the other question or comment is accessible washrooms. I know that that's been, like when I read things in the news and listen to the news, it's definitely an issue even before COVID. You know, people having access to washroom. So I was happy to hear that there is plans in the town of Yarmouth. So I'm hoping that we can work as a council through the Accessibility Committee to get something available in, in the municipality or maybe a couple of spots. But I'll keep that on my radar. Thanks.
Yes. And, and that's why we've kind of been targeting some of our facilities to try to upgrade bit by bit, I guess, because 2030 is coming. The goal that the province sent was that by 2030, all public facilities will be fully accessible. So one of the things that I have seen is just with our, like Sobeys, Canadian Tire, a lot of our businesses are doing renovations for accessibility as well as for COVID-19 is that in some areas where there may be two or three stalls, they're taking those out, making the washrooms unisex for anyone to use and making, so there may remove a urinal and only put one toilet in, but make the space more accessible, easier for people with mobility issues to get in and out of. Perhaps there may be a, a change table that's in there as well. So yeah, things are, if you take a look around and if you are in, in different spaces, I think most businesses are coming along line with that, too. It was interesting to hear a building inspector mentioned the building code is 2015. So we've all been, we've all been talking accessibility and accessibility codes probably for at least five years. So it'll be interesting to see what the building code has to address accessibility.
I, I was thinking the same thing. How will the building code change in the next 10 years to meet the needs and, you know, the requirements that the government has? But, well, thank you very much.
I know.
Thank you, Counselor. Next one would be Counselor Lauren Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Frank. Again, your, your department does a great job, especially with this COVID that's been around and been a very challenging for you. Couple of questions. You have to, you have to refresh my memory. You're looking at phase two of the Milo Boathouse project. Did Modi contribute any funds to phase one? Yes, we did.
Yep.
Yeah, I thought we did.
The first project we looked at as a partnership where the town and Modi and the province all contributed a third to the project. For this go-around, I, we have a number of projects before municipal council for their approval through the capital budget process. And we just thought it would be, for the next phase, I don't think it's going to be as large a project as, as the initial one. So we kind of thought that we would just kind of do some things in the municipality and, and see if the towns could look after the next phase.
Okay. That's a good thought. Because the Milo area, the Milo Boat Club and the swimming and the boating and, and whatnot is, is heavily used by the citizens of the municipality also. So it was a good thing that we participated in the funding for the phase one. My second question to you is, you've been around the recreation for many years. And have you, when a new program comes up that, that you're challenged with, you go through a series of, of how-to and training and so on? Is that correct?
We try, yes. Especially with two new staff that are involved with our programs. It's a, it's been a little bit interesting, I guess. Whereas in the past, we may have a, a blanket of activities that, that from the previous year that worked out well with recommendations for changes.
Right.
And then our new staff started and we're dealing with COVID. It was kind of like an open book that we were kind of starting from scratch. Or one of the things I've said often is it seems like we're doing recreation the way we did when in 90, in the 90s when I was a summer student. We're going back to very simple type of activities, low-budget, activities for everyone versus more specialized and specific.
But if you were given a task to develop a program for some type of activity, it would be a challenge, but you would be able to probably figure it out?
Exactly. For example, I'll give you an update. On Monday is our Heritage Day, federal holiday. The last number of, of Heritage Days, we've done a community walk in partnership with the Yarmouth County Community Health Board. We were planning to gather people in groups of 50. That's, that quickly got changed into groups of 10. So then we were looking at five separate walks in groups of 10 to total a gathering size of 50. So what we've done since then, because that really, we looked at things that really didn't make any sense. So we're still going ahead with the Heritage Day Walk. We're still going ahead with prizes and encouraging people and families to get out and walk. It also coincides with National Flag of Canada Day. So we're encouraging people to wave their flag and dress in red and white and that sort of thing. But the gathering part just got to the point where it didn't make sense. So we, again, are doing more of a social campaign where we're telling, get out and walk in your community, get out and walk a specific trail where we'll have a scavenger hunt for people, but do it on your own time. That way, it's not an official gathering.
Right.
So, yeah. So to me, almost everything that we've done during COVID, we've had an idea, we've looked at numbers, and then once we got down to the logistics of it, those numbers change or we cut back. Our summer program, when we were initially thinking of groups of 10, you know, we wanted to have small groups of 10, but we had to count, account for staff and supervisors. So those groups of 10 quickly became groups of six. Because if you have two summer staff and myself and, and Sarah LeBlong checking on them, then that makes your pot of 10. So it's, it's always that, that.
It's a challenge, for sure. Thank you, Frank. Keep up the good work.
Counselor Patty Dirkie, I believe, is the next on the docket.
Thank you, Frank. That was great, very informative. One of the things I just want to mention, because you are on the Milo Committee, that somebody had posted a picture of some playground equipment that was in a lake, something that Trevor and I had brought up a couple of years ago, that would be really fun. So that's, I just want to throw that out there so you can just, you know, put it somewhere in your head, a drawer in there to, as part of the project. It might be a really neat idea to get, you know, people. to, as part of the project. It might be a really neat idea to get, you know, people out with bouncy equipment in the middle of the lake would be really fun.
Right on. Yeah, I've got that on file.
Great, thanks.
I believe next is councillor Nick Hilton.
Good morning, Frank. Just a couple of things. First, I've called the Recreation Department all kinds of times over the years to book baseball fields and basketball courts, and just a big thank you to Gail for being a warm and welcoming voice, and we're, thank her for her dedication to our municipality. Also, a thank you, as you talked about how Dr. Strang has been working with recreation to make things accessible, and as also a member of a recreation organization in our community, he was, been spot-on and very available, and we thank him and Premier MacNeil for everything they've done, and wish Premier MacNeil a happy retirement. In saying that, one of the things that was probably born out of that was the Walk Fundy walking program, and I also joined that, and I give credit to your team for coming up with that idea, and we've walked, or I've personally walked. I know people are way past me, but over 300 kilometers. And when I looked at what I did in December, sitting at an office desk, it was well, well, well under that. So a credit to you guys. And Disc Golf is something I'm happy to hear that you're looking into. As a member of the Golf and Country Club, I look forward to those conversations in the future. It's important to maximize those facilities as much as possible, and I can't wait to have that conversation. So thank you very much, Frank, for everything.
Awesome. Thank you, councillor Hilton, and thank you for helping me get my truck started this morning. I had a dead battery, or maybe the truck wasn't fully in park or something like that, so councillor Hilton helped out with that. So, yeah, so the Walk Fundy program, we were blown away by the number of people that signed up for that. And yes, we know what happens in January every year, especially during a pandemic. Everyone ate too much over the holidays, and were, you know, sitting on the couch in front of the TV, watching movies too much. So in January, everyone makes that resolution to get more active, so we did capitalize on that. And Sarah did a great job with that program, and there will be more things coming like that. It is quite time-consuming for Sarah to tabulate all the tally sheets that come in and add them to the total, but I think, the last time I checked, I think she had something like 30 million steps. So lots of people are doing lots of steps.
As of this morning, she posted that we've, as a group, walked around the world once, in addition.
Pretty incredible. So, yeah, good job, and, yeah, we'll definitely be trying to do more things like that to get people moving.
Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, you have the floor.
Yes, Frank. Just maybe if you could comment a little bit more on the timeline around the Milo project, or if there are any other additional tidbits you could, you could offer at this point. I know it's early.
So, and our CEO may be able to help me with this. There are contract negotiations going with a proponent that council has selected, and I do believe I saw an email that, from that proponent, that they're looking at having an initial kickoff meeting.
I feel your pain now, Frank. Yeah, so typically what the process looks like when council is going to engage with consultants or experts to help us on projects is, once we go through the procurement process, there's just that little gap where we nail down the details around the engagement in the contract, and so we're just bringing that to a close. The Steering Committee has already had, has already met. They're chaired by councillor Lauren Cushing, and they are the ones who made the recommendation to council on the lead proponents. So I would say, late winter, early spring, you're going to start to see quite a bit happening around that project. And between the chair of the Steering Committee and Frank and myself, the reports will be coming back through to council.
And one exciting, well, I guess you can call it two exciting projects that coincide with that Lake Milo project, the two trail extensions of the trail sidewalk connecting to the rail trail up the Greenville Road, and then continuing down into Dayton near the Red and White. So not part of the Lake Milo Active Transportation Project, but we know it definitely is. But those projects were already approved by council, so I can't wait to see those get going.
Any more comments, questions for Frank? Any from staff?
All right, thank you very much, Frank. You went through a lot of stuff here. The Lake Milo Active Transportation Project, Phase Two Milo. You did mention the Battery and the Plow Truck. I did watch that, that show out there, by the way, but you guys had already had the thing running.
Well, John, John used the plow yesterday, and John's off not peeling well today, not COVID-related. And I was just going to take the truck down to clear the entrances at Milo and throw some salt down, and the truck wouldn't start. So I boosted it, and I think Nick, I think it wasn't all the way into park is the reason why it wouldn't start. So I don't think I need a boost.
All right, well, thank you very much, Frank. One thing I wanted to mention, the strategic planning session for the Mariner Centre, I'm very excited to get moving forward with that. I do believe we got an invite from Doram Haji. I think the first, I know there's, the second one was March the 3rd. I can't remember when the first one was.
Next week, the 17th.
Yeah, next week, the 17th. So I'm very excited to get moving forward with that. Also, Yarmouth Recreation, I do believe, had a, like a makeshift walking track around there as well?
Yes, not a, not a loop, but more like an L shape that people can go back and forth. So we mapped that out with Durham and the Mariner Centre crew, and we even put some chairs out along the way for people to stop if they need a rest. And, yeah, so lots of walkers are going there and using it. It's a tuney per walk, so a little bit of revenue coming in for the Mariner Centre, and the planning session should be good on the 17th, 10th, 3rd.
Absolutely. That's just ideas, thinking outside of the box, for using the facilities we already have, so. Very glad to see that. So thank you very much, Frank, and I missed you on skate the other day. The first time I skated, I think, in 10 years since I broke my leg. So hopefully to see you out there in the public skate.
I'm hoping that my, I've been injured with an ankle injury for three months now, so I'm hoping to be back on my skates on February 16th.
All right. Hopefully see you then. Thank you very much, Frank. Item 4.4, CEO Victoria Brooks, partnerships. Deputy Warden, I'm going to be stepping down from the chair for a minute, but I think I'll be back by the time she's done her quick little spiel, so.
I'll switch, not a second.
Yeah.
Madam CEO, you have the floor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council and Warden Cunningham. I think this is actually the first time I've done a presentation. I've been around the table, but I'm coming to you today basically in relation to your orientation and training policy, and it's part of that piece where we want to intentionally just build out the dialogue around the council table, around elements that are important for council and staff in order to serve, serve our residents. So today's kind of just a high-level conversation about partnerships in relation to municipal government, and just to bring forward some examples of partnerships, and just to provide some food for thought around partnerships and how we can use them and move forward. So on a high level, you know, what are partnerships? And so generally speaking, not a technical definition, but generally speaking, partnerships are an arrangement where parties agree to cooperate to advance a mutual interest. So there's something that more than one person, agency, organization says, yeah, that's something that we want to see happen, and so you come together in some way to make it happen. And in municipal government, we rely on partnerships quite often to get the job done. And I'll talk a little bit more about what that job is and why we need partnerships sometimes to do that. And then, of course, there are lots of partnership types and structures. I mean, you can have formal partnerships, which are, you know, agreements, contracts, legal entities, and informal partnerships, handshakes, or through letters, or sometimes things just happen, and you've worked together on something. So a couple of examples, and the District of Yarmouth is heavily involved in partnerships on all levels and on the whole spectrum of formality and informality, but just a couple that I wanted to highlight. Waste Check is one of our older partnerships. We've been involved in a regional solid waste management since the 1990s, whenever it came into legislation. The picture is of our windmills in Wellington, and that's a joint green energy project that we're involved with. We have citizen representation. We work with Argyle and the Town on that project. The Mariner Centre, of course, is a high-profile partnership that Modi is involved in, and the Western Regional Enterprise Network is our newest partnership model for economic development on a regional scale. So why would we use partnerships to get the job done? These are just some thoughts that I had. I'm not suggesting that it's exhaustive, but they are certainly probably some of the more common reasons why we might use partnerships. So service expectations around our clients, and, you know, we might want to make the experience smoother for the client, and Yarmouth Recreation is an example of that. That's an intermunicipal agreement between Modi and the town of Yarmouth, and we do things to smoothen the recreation experience across the municipal boundaries. There could be political advantages. The work that council wants to undertake might do, do what you need it to do better if you position it within existing political mandates or goals. So while we're not required to participate in a regional enterprise network, from an economic development perspective, if we do participate, we have advantage, advantages politically in terms of our relationship with the province. There could be financial reasons why we would want to engage in a partnership, to create economies of scale, to reduce the cost, or to increase affordability. And so Yarmouth County Solid Waste Park is an example of that. I don't think any of the three municipal owners could undertake that activity on their own. We also might have a legislative reason why we would want to engage in partnerships. So we're required by law or regulation, and Waste Check is an example of that. So under section 102 of the Environment Act, regulations were created, and in division three of the regulations, we're mandated to have a solid waste management model, and so that's why we have Waste Check. There could be people advantages. So we, we are generally, in our community, familiar with the labor issue and attracting talent to what could be viewed as, as a community that is isolated. I don't agree with that, but that could be, that could be the view. And so attracting talented people to do the work on or for or with council can be challenging. And so we have an example of where we've partnered with the municipality of Argyle, and we cost-share on a GIS technician, and we have an incredibly talented, hard-working individual who provides those services to both municipal units. And so that's a people advantage to that partnership. And there could be a combination of reasons. So, you know, one or more of the reasons I mentioned, or reasons I haven't mentioned, and Remo is an example of that. You know, we have legislative pieces around emergency management. We certainly have people pieces and economies of scale pieces. So our recent agreement with the town of Yarmouth and the municipality of Argyle to develop county-level emergency management would be an example of a partnership that speaks to a combination of those reasons. So we know that we generally need partnerships, and we know that we need them for a variety of reasons, but what should we be looking for? And I'm suggesting that there are some fairly basic pillars of good partnerships we should be looking for as a municipality. We should be looking for something that's mutually beneficial, and the partners at the table should be able to state what the benefits are to each party. We're coming to the table because there's a, there's a need, and somebody else is coming to the table because they have a need. And so it's always a good idea to make sure we understand why it's mutually beneficial. We should be undertaking the partnerships in good faith. Oxford Dictionary defines good faith as honesty or sincerity of intention. We want to be really respectful of the people that are choosing to work with us, and we want to be sure that when we're coming to them, we're coming to them sincerely, we're being as honest and forthright as we can be with them. You have to have trust in a partnership. Early conversations, project design, all of those pieces. We'll never get to an official negotiation if, if there isn't trust at the table, and so trust is critical. Respect and integrity. In culture today, we talk a lot about the importance of respect and integrity in treating each other holistically in a way that we basically embrace the golden rule, and we do to other people or our partners what we would like to have done to us. And certainly not last, and certainly not least important, but there is the political consensus and alignment piece. So, you know, formalizing the consensus around the partnership table, particularly when the partners want to work with senior levels of government, they, those senior levels of government will insist that the people coming together and asking them to step into the partnership have strong consensus and are aligned. So I wanted to give you a couple of examples of projects that demonstrate there must have been some attributes of good partnerships for them to go forward, and this is one that I have a little bit of personal experience with. So Smith's Cove Bear River Sewer Treatment. In the 1990s, the District of Digby bought treatment services from Annapolis County. So wastewater went through the village of Bear River, which is half in the District of Digby and half in the County of Annapolis. And so treatment went across the bridge from the Digby County side, across the bridge to the Annapolis County side, to what looks like a greenhouse here in the picture, but that's actually a sewer treatment plant. And they, they had some very interesting things happening in there that were commingling with sewer treatment. And so from the mid-1990s to 2013, the material went from west to east. As this asset was approaching its end of life for the purpose that it was built, the dynamics inside the agreement presented some numbers that it didn't make sense for the District of Digby to continue in the relationship. And so they used the terms in the partnership to respectfully exit the relationship and went on their own, and they built a sewer treatment plant in Smith's Cove. Well, when that happened, the County of Annapolis got looking at their numbers and approached the District of Digby and said, maybe now it's more about you having the resources and the tools and the facilities that can help our residents. And so materials started going from east to west. And at the time, the warden of the County of Annapolis, Reg Ritchie, was quoted in the media saying, pooling of resources instead of competing for resources results in improved economic and community development for both areas. We are eliminating boundaries and working together to benefit residents. We want to thank the federal and provincial governments and the municipality of the District of Digby for their continued partnership and collaboration. So you can see a long-term relationship over time, having that natural ebb and flow, and for the benefit of the residents, you know. There's legislative reasons why we have to treat waste. There are people reasons why we treat waste, so I thought that was a great example, and was happy to see after I left the District of Digby that things were able to continue even if they looked different. Another example of a go project that's closer to home for us is the Rural Internet Project. So we leveraged the organization, the Western REN, and municipal units who are inside the REN, banded, you get that joke, we banded together for broadband internet. Anyway, that's just my corny sense of humor. We, some of the units in the REN, we banded together, and we created a competitive bid structure to get an internet service provider to work with us, who then made our bids to the Nova Scotia Internet Trust. And so we worked with the District of Digby, the District of Clare, District of Argyle, and District of Barrington inside our REN partnership to have that happen. So there was no formal structure around this. We just organically came together in a partnership inside of a partnership to get the job done. Another example of a go project is Yarmouth County Regional Emergency Management. So the town of Yarmouth, the municipality of Argyle, and the municipality of Yarmouth have now created a county-level approach to emergency preparedness. So we're resourced for higher service levels to our residents. We have a more seamless service and guidance for our residents, and we leverage and share resources. So while there are tools... So, while there are tools and assets that are owned by the individual partners, we can leverage them for whatever makes sense in the event of an emergency. And I will say, this was a long time coming. This took the political consensus to come into place. So, I have notes in my files that I inherited from the former CAO. Twenty years ago, this was being talked about, and we formalized this in 2019. So, that speaks to the importance of the political alignment. It's got to be there for partnerships to come to fruition. There are projects that don't go for various reasons, and this was a long-term project. So, this is a school in HRM that closed, and HRM has been there since 2012 and maybe before to try to figure out what to do with these lands, and there was a process in place where the province of Nova Scotia stepped in and wanted to be part of this project to redevelop it to 500 residential housing units, 40% of which would have been affordable housing units, for a total project value of $100 million. The project did not go forward. The province stepped away from the table. There were issues around what the community wanted, the provincial agenda and priorities, and as well as what the not-for-profit steering committee was looking to have happen here. So, as a result, this property still sits undeveloped, and the HRM is continuing to look for partners to figure out what to do with this as part of their overall strategic plan. A project that's currently at risk is the notion of a CFL football team in Atlantic Canada, and it's being proposed that it be in Nova Scotia. So, this is involving the private sector, it's involving Halifax Regional Municipality, it's involving the province of Nova Scotia. And the project continues to be at risk because the three main partners are not getting their alignments in jive. So, I'm not saying that the partners are not committed to the project, I'm saying that the timing doesn't just seem to be quite jiving for this to solidify. And so, this is a major project for Atlantic Canada that is, I'm saying, at risk. I'm not, there's been no announcement that it's officially a go, although HRM is supportive of it. It's going to require other people to come to the table. And so, that could be a game changer for Atlantic Canada if we can now say that we have a CFL football team. And we know from the Ivy Report, if something like this was to happen in HRM, that Nova Scotia would benefit generally from it. So, what are our takeaways, then, in terms of, you know, what we can do with this information? I think it's important for council to know its why. It's difficult to get the best possible partnership framework if this question is not answered. So, when council instructs me to do something for them, or they step up to the table to do something, it's really important to have a clear articulation of your why. Why are you coming to the table? We also need to know our partners' why. Being able to relate and understand and contextualize the various perspectives that are around the table is a key piece of successfully partnering and successfully negotiating. And we need to remember that it is about give and take. It's a good idea to set a project charter in advance. Begin as you mean to go on and hold each other accountable. I think that this, if time is invested at this step of the process on some of the key issues around what's being proposed, I think difficulties which could risk or put an end to the project could be mitigated. I think that it's important for partners to know their areas of concession and their non-negotiables, and it's okay to say that you have non-negotiables. Council has fiduciary responsibilities, and that could impact whether or not there's a non-negotiable element for you in a partnership or in a negotiation. It's also important to know, excuse me, what might cause council to want to exit a partnership, and how to do it well, and how to do it with integrity and respect. When the District of Digby decided that partnering with Annapolis County for sewer treatment was no longer in their best interest, there was not a huge public outcry, there was not a hurrah. It was done with respect, it was done under the terms of the agreement, and everybody respected the decision that the council took. And we should be checking in on our pillars. You know, has everyone honored them? Are we rowing in the same direction and in the same beat? It is not enough just to say we're all headed in the same direction. If you think about a rowing team, everybody can be rowing in the same direction, but if they're not rowing to the same beat, it can be problematic. So, this is just some food for thought to help council as we continue to take steps forward for and on behalf of our residents.
Thank you very much, Madam CEO. Any questions? Counselor Allen, maybe unrelated, I don't believe it is, when you're talking about partnerships, I just want to say that we had a partnership with the province of Nova Scotia for our Com Drive, and I am hearing that our new tenants, Millennium One, this morning on the radio advertising for employment opportunities. They're having a couple of job fairs up there that are going to be taking place here really soon. So, I think it's a great example of a partnership that has done well for our community and hopefully continues to do well for our community. I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
I think that's a great example, Counselor Allen, because that included the private sector, the federal government, the provincial government, and the municipal government coming together, as well as strong support from the community to want to see the jobs
All right, that concludes our presentation portion of the meeting. We'll move on. Item number 5.1, Old Business, Splash Park Request for Committee Member from the January 27th meeting. Madam CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, at the January council meeting, there was some discussion around how best to support the Splash Park group, and there was a consideration for maybe having the CEO from the Mariner Centre sit at the table. And so, I spoke with Durham, and I also spoke with Linda Gallagher, the president or the chair of the Splash Park group. And knowing that Durham can provide incredible technical support to that group, they are agreeable for that to happen. And so, I think what's appropriate would be for the Modi council to write to the Mariner Centre board and ask that they allow Durham to sit at that table because he's their employee, so that's what would be appropriate.
Counselor Nick Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make the motion that we write to the Mariner Centre board and request that Durham Habib sit on the Splash Park committee moving forward.
All right, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second or a seconded by Counselor Daniel Allen? Is there any discussion? Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham.
Right, just procedurally, I mean, this would come to our regular council meeting for final approval, but I'm guessing it would be understood that we'd get out the correspondence Would that be something that we'd all be agreeable to?
Yes. Would council be all agreeable to that? Counselor Nick Hilton.
Just a question to the CAO. Am I making a recommendation or am I making a motion?
It's a recommendation, because the whole can't make decisions, but I could be directed to do it through consensus, and it can just get done.
So, what is the wish of the council? Do you wish to move forward with consensus, or would you rather make a motion to, like that's on the floor? I see everyone's head nodding in favor of consensus, so I guess the mover and seconded, do you wish to withdraw your motion?
Yes.
Is that okay with the seconded? Okay, so the motion's withdrawn. So, I guess we have consensus to move forward writing the Mariner Centre board. Any more discussion on that item? Seeing none. Item 5.2, Meeting Dates and Times. You all have that in your package. You have the policy for our council meetings as soon as it comes up. This was requested to have on our agenda because this is, number one, your council. There's, this is the policy, the council procedural policy, C-028-19. Council may at any time wish to possibly change that, and there wasn't a question about dates and times of the meetings, so I leave the floor open to council. Counselor Nick Hilton.
So, originally, this was brought up in December when we were newly elected, and pretty much for the committee of the whole meeting, as it was quite difficult for me to attend, but in speaking with other councillors, I think we can leave it the way it is unless anyone's open for discussion. Thanks.
Is there any other councillors? Counselor Sherry Hurlebert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that when, as new councillors, when we look at our timelines and schedules, you know, it's always sometimes a challenge to schedule things, and I think that Counselor Hilton, you know, raised a good point, and, you know, the people who have full-time jobs trying to juggle this, and originally, I think the ask was going to be to change the time, but if Counselor Hilton is fine with keeping it on Wednesdays, then that's okay, but I would be willing to support, you know, discussion and changing the date if we need to.
Thank you very much, Counselor. One thing that I would kind of like to see happen is maybe move the time of the committee of the whole if we're going to do something at all, moving from 10 o'clock when it starts to 9 o'clock. And the reason why I say that is because it moves over into lunch hour and stuff like that. That is just one suggestion. Years ago, or when I was first on council, we used to have the in-camera portion of the committee of the whole meetings start at 9 o'clock, and then we commenced with the committee of the whole meetings at 10. I would, I kind of liked the 9 o'clock timeline to start. Most generally, our committee of the whole meetings last two to four hours on average. And also, when it comes about noon time, we're all getting hungry and stuff like that, so I'm just wondering, throwing that out there if council's on board with that. Counselor Nick Hilton.
So, that would actually be beneficial for myself, so if, do we need to make that recommendation or change the policy?
Yep, it would be a recommendation to amend the policy. And so, if, another thing I noted in the policy on Section 4.2 around the committee of the whole, in the policy, we limit the committee of the whole to three hours, and that can be a good thing, but my experience has been that we really need about four hours to get your committee of the whole work done, so I'd recommend that we would provide you with that in your policy as well.
Do I need to make an official ask?
You can make a motion, or we can wait to, here's, Counselor Cushing has, would might have a comment, and then afterwards, entertain a motion. I'd like a little discussion on this. Counselor Lauren Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I agree totally that we should be starting our meetings at 9 o'clock, because 10 o'clock is halfway through the morning, and if we have a four-hour session, which usually goes through with a committee of the whole, it takes us over the lunch hour, so I certainly will support any type of motion that is given to start things at 9 o'clock.
I believe, Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, you have the floor.
So, yeah, I'll just move that we direct the CEO to bring those amendments to the policy to the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Okay, a motion on the floor by Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham, seconded by Counselor Patty Derkey. Counselor Patty Derkey, your microphone was flashing, so you have the floor. Motion on the floor.
I just want to comment that I'm fine with that as well.
Okay. So, is a motion on the floor to recommend the council to change the meeting time and the amendment to the meeting length? Is that it, Madam CEO?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Now, the policy doesn't stipulate right now that it's on Wednesday, the second Wednesday at 9:00. It says that we'll review it annually, so unless council would like to get that specific in the policy, the only amendment to the policy will be to increase the length from three hours to four hours. Otherwise, in that, it's just agreed upon, and we'll make sure that our public communications pieces say that it's the second Wednesday at 9:00 a.m., if that's what you would like.
Is there any more discussion on that motion? If not, I'd entertain a question. Question being called on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried. Moving on, item 5.3, Ground Search and Rescue.
Counselor Nick Hilton. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, last week, we were all present for a presentation by Ground Search and Rescue, or Yarmouth County Ground Search and Rescue, to all three councils. I feel the need was identified for, a need was identified that would include funds for repairs and proposed, possibly a proposed location change. I would like to recommend to the next council meeting that we direct staff to work with our partners and the municipality of Argyle and the Town of Yarmouth to work with the Ground Search and Rescue to explore how other municipalities support their ground search and rescue teams and bring recommendations to council and how we can best support that organization. Thank you.
So, Counselor Hilton, did you make that a motion?
I made it a recommendation.
You made it a recommendation.
Is that correct?
Yep. So, you moved and recommended counsel that.
Yes. Yes.
Is there any discussion on that? Counselor Sherry Hurlebert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that it's important for us to continue to explore this Ground Search and Rescue. We know in the last few months in Yarmouth County and surrounding areas have been integral in searching for lost, misplaced, lost people, and their service to us has been invaluable, and I think that any support that we, along with our other partners, can provide them would be greatly appreciated. Thanks.
My apologies, council, but there was a recommendation to move to council, so that was a motion. I didn't entertain a seconded for that motion. Would someone second that? Seconded by Counselor Sherry Hurlebert. My apologies. We already started a discussion on the motion. Is there any more discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Counselor Patty Derkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I happened to watch Argyle's meeting last night, and they had a discussion about Ground Search and Rescue too, and one of the things that they brought up similar is the fact that, you know, looking at their building, is it safe? And they had recommended that there be a, oh my gosh, brain fart, sorry, someone go and inspect their building.
What are the conditions of the building?
Yes, inspection, thank you, that's the word I was looking for, have it inspection, because the question is, is it worth putting any money into it or not? And there's no sense if it's not safe. So, that was one of the recommendations that came. What they also did was they had money left over in their grant, they had $8,800 left over in their grant funding, and so, they were offering that to Ground Search and Rescue, I guess, for, more for operations at this point than capital. So, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. So, I think that's just something that we should be considering as well if we have, particularly for operations at this time, not just capital, if we have some money that we could contribute.
Yes, go ahead, Madam CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, through you to Counselor Derkey, I think that's going to tie into an agenda item we're going to talk about just in a couple minutes around a proposal for how we might be able to use some of our safe restart money.
Is there any more discussion on the motion on the floor? If not, I'd entertain a question. Question being called on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried unanimously. Moving on to New Business, item 6, 6.1, Policy Amendment, the Low Income Tax Exemption. You all have that in your package along with the current policy. Madam CEO, I believe you will be speaking to that.
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the policy requires that the income threshold for our low-income tax exemption move by the Nova Scotia Consumer Price income threshold for our low income tax exemption move by the Nova Scotia Consumer Price Index every year, but the policy does require council to approve that actual amount. And so for this year, we're using 0.3% is the recommended CPI increment on that. And so the request would be to recommend to council to approve 0.3% as the CPI for the low income threshold.
Counselor Patty Durkey. Councillor Patty Durkey.
Thank you. I'll, I'll recommend that we move that to regular council for approval.
A motion on the floor to move the recommendation to regular council for approval, seconded by the deputy warden. Any discussion on that? Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham.
Just additionally, I saw in the brief that there was some discussion about the possible, possibility reverting the application deadline to May 15th. Is that something that we're looking at doing or are we going to keep it for September?
So I think I understood council that we only moved it to September last year due to COVID. I didn't receive instructions to change our administrative process for this fiscal year. So we would stay with the May 15th, yep.
Is there any more discussion on the motion? Hearing and seeing none, then question being called on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded? Motion carried unanimously. Moving on, item six point two, safe restart community grant discussion. Madam CAO, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what I have brought before you today is really just something to talk about. In March, the Director of Finance will be coming before you with me and we're going to be taking a look at our financial situation as we near the end of the fiscal year. We'll have some information for you around our $592,000 safe restart money and where, based on the accountability framework, we're going to be able to allocate some expenses under that fund. And so in preparation for that conversation in March, I wanted to bring to you kind of a draft outline of a piece that we understand is going to be allowable under that safe restart. So when we met with provincial officials last week to receive our instructions on how that money can be spent, there were questions about how municipalities could use that money to support community groups. And the notion is, is that community groups do important work and that they've been significantly affected by COVID in terms of how they can raise funds and even if they can raise funds. And so it was generally agreed that as long as there's a demonstration that the loss is directly linked to COVID, that it would be an allowable expense. And so for conversation today, not for decision or recommendation today, I have before you this proposed COVID-19 nonprofit relief grant. And so I'll just walk through the elements of it. So it would dovetail into our normal community grant policy, but it would have some specifics around it. And so the effects of the global pandemic have been felt by all sectors of society, including nonprofit organizations that deliver services to the communities of Modi on an ongoing or continual basis and rely on fundraising to operate. The municipality, the district of Yarmouth, realizes that COVID-19 has made it difficult or near impossible for not-for-profit organizations to conduct their normal fundraising activities. And it is with this in mind that council has established a one-time $50,000 COVID nonprofit relief grant. Any registered nonprofit organization that operates in or for the benefit of residents of Modi is eligible to apply for this one-time grant. To be considered for the grant, you must provide proof of your nonprofit status, including your joint stocks number, have operated for at least one year prior to March 2020, commit to operating this year, 2021, and demonstrate how you will spend the funds requested. List fundraising that was conducted prior to COVID-19 and the amount raised for each activity. And here's where it ties into the accountability framework. List the fundraising activities that could not be modified to comply with public health regulations relating to COVID-19. And then to fill out the application form and if available, provide the most recent financial statements. And so we're looking at, you know, having this turn around fairly quickly if it's agreeable to council and try to do it in the late winter, early spring. So I just am pitching this as a piece so that when we come to you in March and do the finance presentation, we kind of know what your thoughts are on how this might fit.
Counselor Nick Hilton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank staff for this proposal. I think it's a great way to show organizations in our community that we do recognize that there is a need and that it's been a difficult year. As a member of an organization, it is extremely impacted any way of fundraising. And I'm really excited to see that we're making an effort to assist the needs of the community. So thank you very much.
Counselor Daniel Allen.
I think this is a, this is a great idea. I just want, I'm just kind of nitpicking on the way I read it at first around the wording. The one-time $50,000 COVID nonprofit relief grant. I want to make sure, like, well, I'll ask the question. I'm assuming it's a $50,000 total grant to be split. So I just wonder if we should have wording around that because then it says anyone can apply for this one-time grant. I want to make sure that businesses understand that it's not a $50,000 per per application.
Fund is the better word, fund. So it's a $50,000 fund.
I'm just, I'm just, yes, yeah. Just to make sure, just to make sure there's no, you know, because some organizations such as ground search and rescue will be looking probably for the full amount if at all possible. So I just want to make sure that, you know, organizations know that it's 50,000 to be spread amongst the needed, the people that need it.
Counselor Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam CAO. I think this is a fantastic idea. And yes, I was thinking the same thing as Dan in terms of councillor Dan and in terms of the amounts. And is there a maximum that each nonprofit organization could apply for? I think that's something that we might want to consider because I know there are going to be a lot of nonprofit organizations that will be looking for some support.
Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham.
Yes. That's a, that's a good point that councillor Allen brought up and I would, I would think that that was kind of going to be my question as well. I would think that we, just with all the other grant dollars we'd ask, ask the community groups to put in an ask and then, and then of course, we can do the, do the math. We'll have $50,000 to allot folks and, and, you know, based on our conversations and during the grant process, just like with the regular grants, I would expect that we'd come up with with a number for each of the community groups that would spread it equitably in the community, within the community. And just looking for clarification on that as well.
Counselor Sheri Hurliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to echo the sentiments of the rest of the councillors who spoke in that I think that this is a great idea and using the word fund instead of grant may be a little clearer for our residents. And just making sure that our residents or our nonprofit organizations in the municipality kind of know what the guidelines are. And at the bottom of the staff report where it says event-based organizations do not qualify, so just making sure that when we're putting, when we finally made the approval of this, to make sure that we have all of our, you know, criteria listed so that people and organizations are aware of what, who, who can and can't apply and how that happens. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? Counselor Nick Hilton.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And maybe a question through you to the CAO. How did we decide on 50,000? And should we be providing maybe a maximum number? Because like councillor Allen said, there's going to be organizations that ask for a large amount and although they'll be very happy to get some funding, they may be disappointed in the amount that we will then provide them.
Sure. So 50,000 represents just under 10% of the total safe restart fund that's available to council. A couple of things to keep in mind, I know $592,000 sounds like a lot, but that money has to be used to pay for our PPE overtime expenses, the safety-related issues with delivering services to our residents that have been increased costs. And it's, that's all we're going to get. So as the pandemic continues on, that money has to be available to continue to offset those COVID-related expenses. So 10% is, for some people, it's a principle of giving that relates to kind of giving back. So when you're blessed with something, you give back. It's kind of just a, and it really is a number that we're pitching. I would strongly encourage council, you know, to be conservative because we don't know how long the pandemic's going to last. With respect to the feedback on trying to make the money go as far as we can go, in some provincial programs where we're not sure what the subscription level or the uptake level is going to be, but we know we want, we want to fully expend the fund, they use language around, you know, their limits could be placed on, on an award based on the demand for the program. That asks, but you've put a $2,500 limit, you're not going to fully expend your fund. So I think that to councillor Hurliver's point, it's important to manage the expectations. We may want to put some language in there that says, you know, if the fund is heavily subscribed to, we'll have to limit the amount per, per application. But if it's not, council, I'm guessing, would want to fully award the money. So just to provide you with some flexibility there. So we'll go back to the table and we'll work with the language and the wording and you'll see it again at the March Committee of the Whole, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Lauren Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam CAO, for this draft document. I think it is a very good document with a few changes that were mentioned. $50,000 again sounds like a lot, but it's not a lot. But your explanation of it was, was very much appreciated. And as for a lot of the smaller nonprofit community groups that are out there, even a little bit of money is better than no money. You know, to help pay for the light bills or insurances and, and things like that, that that's what they use the fundraising for is to, is to pay the ongoing, ongoing maintenance costs to, to keep, to keep their facility going or their group going because they do provide an essential, to me, an essential service to the, to the people of the community, communities. And this is just one way of saying thank you for your, thank you for your efforts and hopefully this will help you out some until we get this COVID over with. Thank you.
Any more discussions? One thing that worries me a little bit is the subscription level. There's many different organizations, community halls. I can think of quite a few organizations just in my district alone. I'm a little concerned about that. We may be stretched real thin, but I guess, is there going to be a timeline on when the applications would come in there? If it's in there, I missed it.
It's not in the framework there, but typically what we do when we have a call for applications is there's a window, there's an application period. And so it would, it would open on a certain day and close on a certain day.
Okay. So I guess staff, we taking that back and working on that for the next committee of the whole meeting?
Yep.
Is there any more questions or comments about that subject matter? Hearing none, we'll move on. Item six point three, policy development workshop.
So I think the Director of Corporate Services is probably going to come down and have a seat and we're going to work through, we're going to roll up our sleeves and work a little bit, Mr. Chair, if that's agreeable to council, which I hope it is.
I have my hammer here, so I'm ready to work.
So I'll get you to turn your microphone on, Darlene, just in case you need it. Turn it. Might need mic. Mic for the mic. Oh, you had to leave it on, yep. Some would say that's a little like auto repair. It's just luck of the draw.
No, auto repair requires lots of hammers. Trust me, I happen to be an expert in that field.
So am I good to go, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely, Madam CAO.
So what Darlene, the Director of Corporate Services, and I wanted to do with council today, the top three policies that you have asked us to start to work on for you are your council communication policy, your council social media policy, and council video conferencing policy. And so it's a little bit of new territory for us. There are, there are some municipalities that are further down the road than we are with it. But what Darlene and I thought we'd like to do is to hear, hear you, have a conversation with each other around these policy bodies, these policy themes, and we're going to, we're going to record what we hear from you and we're going to try to develop a first draft of each one that we think speaks to some of the concerns or desires that you've raised here today, as well as some of the other pieces that we'll be recommending in terms of best practices. And so I'm, I'm going to kick things off. Darlene will probably chime in where appropriate to help answer your questions, but really what we want to do is just spur on conversation among the seven of you and we want to just record, record what you're saying to inform our drafting. So I will, I will kick things off, Mr. Chair, unless you want to lead the conversation through that document.
Well, if you wish, I guess what we're, I'm going to ask you is, in regards to, are we going to pick one policy at a time, like communications, and then there's down, down below in this document points to consider, what is the public realm? What does it mean?
Right, so we would just work through the document from beginning to end.
Okay, so if you want to lead that, because actually I have some input on that.
Okay, sure. Does that mean you're conceding the chair, Trevor?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. It's just, this, this policy is going to affect each and every one of us. And I have my own opinions on, on policies in this regard. May not necessarily be the same as the rest of council, but.
Yep, so I'll lead so that all of council can fully participate and between Darlene and myself and of course, our recording secretary will try to incorporate everything. So communicate, council communications, a policy would be a guiding document for how council communicates with the public and with the media. This could help maintain council's and Modi's reputation by ensuring consistency and accuracy in the information council places in the public realm. So some things to consider, what is in the public realm and what does it mean? So we want to hear from you, what you think the answer to that question is. What is considered official correspondence? Who speaks officially for Modi and council? What assumptions are being made when a councillor is communicating with the public or the media? That one councillor is speaking on behalf of the municipality or council as a whole? What's the difference between when you're representing council in the media or public and when you are representing yourself as an individual? What to do when a councillor receives correspondence from a resident or the media? Who speaks on behalf of committees, the warden or the committee chair? And consistency in terms of look and feel of communication branding, which I think we presented a little bit to you around that in Victoria's Communications Program last month. So maybe I'll ask questions and what I'd like is for the seven of you to talk to each other and we'll, and we'll record because this is your policy. So to, what, what does being in the public realm mean to council?
Opening up the floor. Deputy Warden.
Certainly, I mean, some of the overarching, I guess, ideas in, in when we're talking about council communications is that, that idea that we're all individuals. We have certain rights and freedoms and we're also councillors and we also have roles as councillors that are identified from council, from the power that council has in terms of the warden or deputy warden, committee chairs, those types of things. I think it's important to maintain our ability as individual councillors to speak in terms of our view, views to the public, in the public realm. Obviously, I guess, in terms of, I looked up the dictionary definition, but public, I think, is very, very broad. I mean, certainly, it's always been my practice, if I've been asked a question If I'm talking about the counselor for District 5, or if I have a personal, if they ask me my personal opinion on this, I think I should be very clear that I'm stating this as a personal opinion. Maybe that's just my personal opinion, maybe it's my personal opinion as a counselor. I think it's incumbent on the counselor to make it clear about the viewpoint that he or she's taking, and the perspective that they're coming from, just so there's no ambiguity. I think where we may run into problems at times is when somebody says something and it's assumed by the interviewer, or by the questioner, or by the email recipient, that they're speaking for council. So I think that that really needs to be made clear, also in a policy, is to how we approach that. But again, there's always that tension between freedom to speak and our duty to the elected whole. So that should be parsed out in the policy, but I'd be very, very cautious about a policy that would limit any one counselor's ability to speak on an issue, because I think that's very appropriate at times.
Counselor Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we all know that when a decision has been made by council, council's decision is made, that the warden speaks on our behalf as to what we have decided. And so the public realm would be certainly any type of media that goes on public record. But as Deputy Warden Cunningham has mentioned, that I believe we all have the right to our own opinion, and so there's a difference between opinion and fact, right? So, and I think we've all been pretty good at stating what our opinion and saying, this is my opinion, this is, because there has, as in the past, been information that's been shared about, well, the council has agreed to this, and that wasn't the case. So again, I think I'd like to go back to the fact that once a decision is made by council, then the warden speaks on that, on behalf of that decision. But along the way, we have the right to our opinions, and I would hate to have that, you know, we're not always going to be in agreement, and that's okay. But it's important for us to be able to speak how we feel. I think in terms of who speaks on behalf of committees, I know I'm jumping around here a little bit, but I'm going to throw that out, that I think it's really important that the person who has the most knowledge would be the committee chair about what is going on in that committee, and I think that that person should be speaking on that, on behalf of the actual committee. Because in this case, the warden wouldn't have attended all the meetings that the committee members have been attending. So the chair of that committee would have the most knowledge. Just throw that out there for now.
No, I think that's actually a good point, because I have often deferred any correspondence or statements to committee chairs, because I'm not up to speed or attended all the meetings on different committees. I think that's actually a good point. It may be put in there that the warden may defer comment from the committee chair and/or person that's ahead of it. Yeah, I agree with that. Counselor Lauren Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Couple of things. Counselor Cunningham, Trevor Cunningham brought up about personal opinion, and Counselor Durkey did also, but she also added into fact. Anytime that I speak with residents, when they ask me a question, the first thing I identify to them is, this is my personal opinion, and I am one counselor. And I usually try to deal with as much fact as I can, and if I don't have the facts, I can't give a proper yes or no to the question that is posed to me. So I give my personal opinion of such. Once I realize, once I find out the facts, the actual facts, not hearsay or rumors, but facts. Facts is very important to have, to make your personal opinion. So I just wanted to reinforce that, when I'm asked questions, I always say, this is my personal opinion. I don't say it's the opinion of council, which we don't have no right to do. Now, as for a chair of committee, I agree with Counselor Durkey there, the chair of the committee should be the most informed about that particular committee that he or she sits on, and can report to council on it. However, before that is done, I think it'd be prudent for the chairperson of that committee should inform the warden of what the committee has recommended, so that the warden is certainly up to date on what the committee had recommended. I don't expect, I know the warden can come to any meeting that is involved with, and as with the CAO, if there's any money being discussed, or other item, policy and whatnot, she certainly is able to come too. But when the committee makes a recommendation, and it should be well-informed on that recommendation, have the facts, I think it's up to that chairperson, like I said, to inform the warden and the CAO of what the committee had recommended. So that's my two cents worth.
Deputy Warden.
Yes, I'll speak to the question, what do you, sorry, what do you do when a counselor receives correspondence from resident slash media? And I think that question should be treated as two separate questions. I wouldn't want to have too strict a protocol around speaking to residents as a counselor. I think the expectation from residents is that when they write us, they typically get an email back. I mean, there's always a judgment piece in any of this unless you write a really, really comprehensive, very, very comprehensive communications policy. But as for the media, I mean, my recommendation is that if it's a media question about council matter, I would suggest that maybe that be directed towards staff and decision through our CAO, a decision about what type of response. I mean, it could still come from the counselor directly, not saying it couldn't, obviously, but it may be better for it to come from the warden, but some, you know, ability for the CAO to think carefully about the response. I think that would protect counselors, maybe get better information out there. I don't know when the last time, can't remember the last time I was really connected or spoke. I'm thinking email too. I mean, if they're asking you, if a media person's approaching you for an on-camera interview, I think that you almost have to take that. I'm thinking more in terms of written correspondence, email from media, you know, when you have some time to respond. But I mean, if you're asked a question, I think that certainly maybe we could speak a little bit about that. And again, those pieces about, are you speaking as a counselor, an individual person, or are you speaking on behalf of the council? And certainly, if you're speaking on behalf of the council, that's typically the warden's function.
Okay, the next one on the docket is Counselor Sheri Hurlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that Madam CAO asked the first question, but we've kind of been skipping all around, so I'm just going to chime in, because I'm all about order and process, and I'm like, well, they haven't asked my question yet, so I'm not sure if I can talk, but you guys have all gone outside the rules.
No, absolutely.
Here I go. I think for me, when we talk about what is official council correspondence in 2021, you know, I personally feel that email is an official form of correspondence. I think media inquiries now, I'm an administrative assistant for a living, and I hate to talk on the phone, so I like to do everything via email, and snail mail doesn't happen, you know, Canada Post doesn't happen very often, so I think when people reach out to us, it's either, for me, it's either by phone, text, or email, and I would have to say if I tracked what kind of correspondence I've received, it's been through email, even the media inquiry we had, you know, recently that I reached out to staff on. So I think that for me, official correspondence is anything that we receive, and even if there isn't an ask in it, and I, for me, when you talk about, you know, things being consistent and accurate, for me, when do we place a correspondence from a resident on our agenda items for review or just consideration, and when don't we do that? So I like the consistent and accuracy piece, and I think, you know, trying to define when we take some of those pieces and move them forward to Committee of the Whole or council, that's important to me. You know, who speaks officially for us? I would agree with some of the comments from other counselors, you know, the warden, you know, definitely, and, you know, committee chairs. And when committee chairs are joint groups, you know, we have other partners in those. So I think, you know, if media reach out to, I am the chair of X committee, but I'm also the chair, and I'm representing other councils. So, you know, I think we have to be cautious and, you know, just jumping in and saying, you know, here's, you know, even though you're the chair, we still have other partners, and that goes to Madam CAO's presentation earlier about, you know, our partners and being considerate of what we say and how we say it. I think that a policy is probably a good idea. I did, when I first was elected, I actually spent a weekend, oh, fun, going through other Nova Scotia municipalities and some across the country on, you know, what policies council has with communications and with social media, and there is a wealth of information out there, you know, how to guide the process, the policies themselves. There are a lot that have been established for, you know, considerable, I say considerable amount of time, like 2019, for me seems like forever ago, but I think that there are lots of good resources out there that we can, you know, take our own time to research as well as, you know, staff, and I think that, you know, we'll come to, you know, an agreement in the end that will be for the best of all of us. Thanks.
Counselor Nick Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So to the first question, what is in the public realm? I think that's a huge question. So I think it's important that we realize that this isn't 10 years ago, it's not 20 years ago, that we are changing quicker and quicker when it comes to social media and the availability of each other, as we are to each other, the expectation that we're available all the time, for good or bad. And we kind of do this to ourselves just by sitting in our comfy chair at home and liking a post or commenting on a post. To them and to anyone in the public, they see that as we're interacting with them. And to me, I'm now in the public realm just by sitting at home. So our policies need to reflect that. It's easier for us to say that, you know, we only comment from eight to four, but the moment I go home and make myself available on social media, I become that public figure, that counselor of sorts. So I think language is important, like Counselor Cushing said, identifying, and maybe we have a series of programmed responses, you know, that we start a conversation with, identifying if it's a personal opinion, opinion of a counselor, opinion of a taxpayer, and kind of just backing each other up in those scenarios. But as I said, some people probably look at Facebook as an official form of correspondence these days, and when we write these policies, we need to realize that although, you know, pen and paper and signing a signature to things are what used to pass, it's not what passes now, and people do expect a response to those simple posts. And I, as a counselor, and having, like to think of myself as technology or technologically in the know a little bit, kind of expect that same response when I put out there a question in those media forums. So it's probably going to be a very difficult policy to draft, and I look forward to seeing what comes out of this. Thanks.
Counselor Daniel Allen.
All right. I agree 100% with Nick, when you go to what is in the public realm, I think once any of us took office, or even decided to run for office, you're officially in the public realm. I think we all, when we did this, know that once you're here, our words can be scrutinized. I guess, I'm not going to give you much for dictating notes here, Darlene, but we all took this office, and we took an oath, and we know we're responsible to the public. So it's really hard when it comes to Facebook and things like that, when you're putting your opinion to differentiate, because now you're seen as a counselor, or you're seen as Nick. It depends, it really depends on what you're talking about. I guess, to me, it comes to common sense. When it's municipal topics, be aware of how you're talking. I mean, it's, we've all got to do it, we all have to use our own common sense, you know, and I'd like to think that we all have some. I know when it comes to like official council correspondence, I just believe that, and I'm going to use the YMCA right now as an example, when we're getting correspondence to me, and it's coming and it's directed to everyone, I believe at that point, that becomes council correspondence, and I believe our warden becomes our spokesperson. If each counselor gets its own letter, I believe you should be able to respond to that. If someone sends a letter to me personally, or to Counselor Hilton, or to Counselor Cunningham, or Counselor Durkey, then obviously, you know, you should be able to respond to that. I think if it's copied to all the counselors and the council, I believe then it becomes more of a council representative, represented by council, and our warden should be the one to speak for us. Who speaks officially for Modi? I think it follows suit that we elected our warden and our deputy warden amongst ourselves, and I believe that that is how it should be. If it's an official council business, I believe it should start with the warden, and if he's not available, it should go to the deputy warden, and then probably on to our I'm just going down your list here, I'm trying to wing them off, is what assumptions are being made when a counselor is communicating with the public or the media? I think that, again, common sense, if you're giving your opinion, make sure that you're stating it's your opinion and your opinion only. I don't believe that we can stifle each and every one of us, we all have, you know, we've all got different ideas, that's what makes this work. It'd be great if everybody thought the same way in the world, but they don't, and everybody is entitled to their opinion. You shouldn't have to not be able to give it. Again, it comes back to common sense. If our council has already made a decision, and that's our official decision, we're back to, our warden is our spokesperson, and I believe that if we start going out and after we've decided something, and we start going out to the public with different opinions, it really gets confusing for Joe Public and everyone that's trying to find out, you know... I'm just looking here, give me just a second, my screen went black. I'm going to skip a few, and I'm going to go to committees, and I agree, I think when it comes to, when it comes to speaking on behalf of committees, I think the chair should be representing that committee. But once that chair or that committee brings something to council, and council has made a decision on it, from then on, I believe it's a council decision, and it should revert back to the warden speaking on behalf of it. Not saying that it takes the chair out, but using the chair as, I don't know if you know what I'm trying to say, I shouldn't say a crutch, but I have no problem to the warden referring to the chair, or even passing things off to the chair, but once a committee brings something to council, and council has made a decision on it, I'd like to think that we've all been educated on the decision we've made, and at that point, it becomes a council decision and reverts back to the warden. And consistency, I think once we've made a decision, we should be consistent, our answers should be consistent. should be consistent. I know, as we're leading up to decisions and very important decisions, everybody has an opinion, and we're all looking for, for information, and people are asking questions, and they'd like information, we just have to be sure that what we're giving them is, is, is a true and honest, you know, it can't be hearsay, it can't be, and it comes back to, again, make sure people know that you're speaking your opinion if you're talking, you know. If, if we've got to revert to council, then I think it should be, you know what, you should be really talking to our warden, because we've made this decision and, and he's our representative. There's no problem in echoing the, the sentiment, but we can't afford to have, I shouldn't say we can't afford, but we shouldn't be out there confusing anyone after we've made a council decision, that, hey, we did wrong, or, you know. I think once we've made a decision, it's ours, we, we own it, and that's, that's where it goes, and hopefully each and every councillor, regardless of, once things are decided, should support each other. So I think I went down your list, I'm not sure if I gave you any information that's helpful, Darlene, but that's just, them are my thoughts on, on what you're asking here in, in the beginning of this.
Thank you, councillor. Just, just a reminder, we don't want to speak on this all day, so try to keep your, some of you have already asked and spoke twice, or the third time, I, I have a couple of comments that I wanted to make, and maybe we should move on, because this is just a, a draft, and it's going to be brought forward to council afterwards, so. But all very good discussion points. Deputy Warden.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be brief, I've, I've spoken twice already. I, I mean, th- this is a complicated piece, I, I agree with parts, or mostly all of what everybody said. The point about an individual councillor and, and the freedom issue, in, in this, I think there's some confusion around this. When we, when we vote, for instance, I wasn't part of the council that approved the building of this building, this is ancient history, but, but had I been there, I would have not voted for, for the building and, and, and the cost and so forth, is it, is it, is it played out? Had I been there and said no to that, I mean, cer- certainly I wouldn't have been obstructionist and done, done anything to stop it, or tied myself to the, you know, chained myself to a tractor out front or anything like that. But, but at the same time, if somebody asked me what my opinion was on it, as a councillor, even though the whole council, so I, I, I don't want there to be confusion, just, just, just because, just because council voted four to three for something, doesn't mean that the dissenting view can't be repeated. Now, again, there's decorum and all that type of thing, I don't think we've had a big issue with that. But I would like to go back quickly and make a cup, and making out, the very first line says, "A policy would be a guiding document." So I think it's really important in terms of structuring something like this. We've talked about so many things, and you would need such a complicated policy to follow. I think it's more about guidelines, and I think it's more about training. So in the policy, I think any new, and we, and to our credit, and to our CAO's credit, and our warden's credit, we have received some media training, communications training. I think that's probably more important than the rules around it. I, I mean, you need some level of rules, but I think it's more about guidelines than it is a, a, a policy booklet, because again, even the, even the issue of, and I interpret it differently, official correspondence, council correspondence, well, is, is that coming in or going out? Is that the ca- ca- council table, is it an email, is it on social media? I agree to an extent, it all has to do with council, and we can never ever divorce ourselves from our role. Once we're elected, we are a councillor, just like a professional person, a teacher. If you're a teacher, you're a teacher, you're bound to the organisation, and, and your behaviour has to reflect that, and so on. So I, I guess without talking too much about this, so those are some of my general comments, but I think it's very, very important to emphasize that piece, and, you know, we're all, we're all elected folks, and we're all responsible to the, to our residents, but also to, to, to the council, so those are my comments.
Counselor Patty Durkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I addressed a couple of the, the questions here, so I want to add a couple of more. What is considered official council correspondence? I think that any, and we have incoming and outgoing, so, a- as the deputy warden mentioned, and so anything that comes into council is official. Once something has been received by any of us, if it's not directed to us personally, but directed to council, and is requested that everybody see that document, then it has to be sent out to everybody. So to me, that's an official piece. So it's incoming and, and outgoing. And how do we define, what is it, anything to me is, is official. If it's, if someone has written a letter to council and has asked for distribution, then to me that, that's official. So we have to make sure that everybody receives that, I think that's one of the most important things. Anything going out officially is signed by our warden, because he is, speaks on our behalf. Again, just to reiterate to councillor or deputy warden Cunningham, that when, when we vote against any motion, we have our own opinion and we have the right to that opinion. And if someone asks us why we didn't vote either in favor or against, I think we need to be able to say why. I think that's important, that people understand. Even though our official communication is whatever council decides, but if we're personally directed, then, then we can't just say, no, I'm not going to tell you. That, that puts us in a very uncomfortable position. I think that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Sherrod.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, I can appreciate that this conversation could be a full day workshop, and I'm just wondering if it would be possible, I have a couple of comments, but wondering if it's possible if I can summarize my notes and send them to staff with a copy to the rest of the councillors, if that would be okay to do? Okay? I guess two additional, I think two additional comments, I think that I would agree with some of the councillors, anything that is sent to us or for us, so if things are asked to be forwarded to us, I think that that's important. I also think that it's important that when the warden, and I know that time sometimes is of the essence, and we can't, we as councillors don't always see beforehand what gets sent out, but I think that it's important for communication of what we have said is given to us the day of or within, you know, maybe we can, you know, timeframe, how long should it take for us to get the information that the warden has issued this press, press release, or that we as the municipality of District of Yarmouth has issued a press release, like kind of just, what kind of time guidelines would there be? And again, I think it is guidelines, because things do happen, you know, quicker than sometimes we would like, but I think that just keeping in mind that we should, I, I personally would like to know when we have said things in the public, so that I can either reference them, or if someone sees me on the street and says, oh, I see you did this, and I'd be like, eh, didn't know that that was, you know, put out there. So I think just some guidelines around how we are informed of when the warden speaks, or when, you know, staff issues, you know, things to the public. Thanks.
Counselor Daniel Allen.
I guess you got, Counselor Cunningham and Counselor Durkey made good points. I guess I, I probably said, I'm not, the speaking part's not my forte, I probably came across the wrong way. When I said about supporting, I agree, everybody has their own opinion, and I said that, and, and I agree. I'm just trying to say that once we make a decision, it's not that your opinion has to change, or that you're not allowed to voice it, but it comes back to common sense, and we still have to try and be a united council. So once we start moving on a project, even though you may not have been in favor of it, we've tried to get, we all, I guess, are obliged to try and get behind it and find the best way to do it. I just want to clarify that, I don't want, in any way, want to stifle someone's opinion, because it's just not right. But I just want to make sure that it comes back to common sense, and I think, I, I don't want to get into situations where we've made a decision, and then one of us is out in the media trashing that decision because it wasn't their opinion, I, I guess. I'd like to think none of us would do that, but I would prefer, I, I, me personally, I would like to, you know, you're still entitled to your opinion, but common sense around this stuff, to me, I think we're all smart people, I think we should, we should, we should be able to know where we can go and where we can't, and, I, again, with, like Counselor Cunningham said, it's really just a guideline, it's, it's more of a guideline to help us, to help us through things, so, you know, that's all I'm looking for. Thanks.
Thank you. Since there's no microphones flashing, and we've, we've pretty well hammered this to death, I, I have a couple of comments on this. In regards to public realm, what I'm learning real quick, no matter where the warden walks, I'm in the public realm, whether it's at my day job, whether it's out at my store, whether it's out on my four wheeler, I found out real quick that I'm in the public realm. So I think everything, that that should be under consideration. I don't think you're ever really out of the public realm unless you're at home, with every, with all the social media shut off, that's just my, what my, see. Official correspondence, obviously we've had a lot of correspondence lately. One thing that we shouldn't entertain in regards to correspondence is a request to read emails from, that was sent to someone else originally, third party correspondence. We've had that happen in the past, it's, it's made me feel quite comfortable. I like to see the correspondence to council, whether it be to the warden, or whether it be through the Modi website, specific asks, I, I'd like to see that. Also, when we have correspondence, and I've tried to do this to everybody, I've tried to CC everybody, I know a couple of times I've slipped up on that, because I've had a lot of correspondence lately in regards to a property at 275 Main Street. I, I really think it should be in the policy or guideline that we have that in there, that everyone's aware of, of what everyone's saying. Most generally, that's happened. Who speaks on behalf of committees? I agree with what Counselor Durkey had mentioned, when it comes to the chairpersons of that thing, yes, the warden should be aware of everything that's going on, but most times, and I've made this a practice in the past, is to defer any comment to a particular council. One thing that I can think of in particular is the Moby Mats out in Port Maitland. I, I believe that the councillors in that district work really hard for projects going on out in your area, and I believe that you should have the opportunity to speak. I had mentioned to the CAO once in regards to that, that we have a more, I speak on behalf of the municipality, my, my view should be broad, especially when it comes to community things, and the councillor can dig down a little bit more in the details. Work as a team, teamwork, we're all team members here. That's one thing I think is very important. For me, the biggest thing that I see is, is correspondence, especially when, when it comes to regards to being on our council agendas. I, I need to think about this a little bit more, because what some people consider correspondence is not correspondence, in my opinion. I did mention the third party aspect of it. I think I'm going to defer to the first draft of this policy first, and then think about it a little bit more, because I'm probably trying to think too deeply, have something in front of us in paper first, and then move on from there. So I'll, I'll leave that thought for, for myself for now. So if there's any more on this policy, I guess the next one would be social media, and also there's questions here, points to consider, so I guess maybe what I'll do is open up the floor to the social media policy, and that one's going to be a tough one. Social media is, is a dangerous place for, for any politician, that's for sure. And like it or not, we were all elected, and no matter where we are, we just talked about it, a public realm, no matter where we seem to be, we're in the public realm, whether you're speaking on behalf of yourself, Facebook pages, things you liked, it's, it's going to be tough, that one's going to be tough. So I see that there's points to consider, should councillors be, allowed to have social media accounts, when they are clearly identified as a Modi councillor, separate from personal accounts, that's a, a good question. Elected official permitted to use Modi branding? If so, what are the terms under which should this happen? So I guess when you speak, speak on behalf of all these points, what are the requirements for taking down page men, pages? What assumptions are being made when an individual councillor makes a post? Who has admin rights on these accounts? This is going to be a tough one. So I see the deputy warden, so I guess maybe what I'm asking is go through those points to consider, and put your input in, and let it go around the table, and staff will get, hopefully, something out of it. Who did I open up? Oh, sorry, Counselor Durkey. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is a, this is a real tough one, and I think it's going to be a long conversation, and I'm just wondering, I might suggest that it's something that we should think of carefully, I know we've had it, it was sent to us, but, you know, once we started the discussion, even on the first part, it, it leads to more ideas and more things, and, and if, you know, I don't know, time wise, if we should defer this to, you know, for us to think more about, or we should be throwing it out there now, but I will throw some, some thoughts out there. One of the things when I was out campaigning the first time, which was really, really important, was lack of communication to our residents, and them wanting to know what was going on in the community. At the time, we didn't even have Facebook Live, we, we had the once, or twice a month East Link, and so people weren't being kept informed. So I found it at that point really valuable to be able to find a way to share points of information as opposed to long discussions, because some people don't have the time to, to sit and watch a Facebook Live presentation now, or we didn't have it then. So I know one of the former councillors used to send an email to get an email listing. Well, that's very difficult today to try and get everyone's email, and, and then do a newsletter from your district to, to everybody. So on a positive note, what I found was, having my own Facebook page was easy for me to share things that the municipality was doing, and those people who followed me could see, you know, points like Waste Check is doing this, or so I, whatever, I always share links from whatever municipality of the District Yarmouth posts, I often share those, which people seem to find quite beneficial. I think in terms of what's going on and things that, that we have passed, I've shared that as well. Just come up with, just a little newsletter, my own comments about, these are the things that we're working on, or things that I'm personally working on in my district, has been really helpful. But I also know that it's a difficult place to, to make comments, because people can be either positive or extremely negative so quickly. So there are a lot of points to consider, it's, it's, I, I agree with some of the comments on, the questions on here, and it, it is asking for a really in-depth convers- conversation about what, what do we do? But just in terms of personal, there, there is a difference between a personal account, and I would not want all my residents on my personal account, where also, you have to be extremely careful about what you're posting on your own personal account, because people can get access to that. And as, as Trevor mentioned, I know as a teacher, once you are in a professional position, and as John mentioned as well, you are in the public realm, so you have to be so careful about what you say and do. You know, it's one thing if you're in confines of your own home, or your own cottage, and you, you're surrounded by those people who you know aren't going to go and tell everybody everything that you say or do, that's okay, but anything you post is, is up for public judgment. So it's, it, it's a difficult talk, topic of conversation.
Deputy Warden.
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Durkey, that this is, this is a, a big ask, but, and I have gone through all, all these questions kind of in mind, but it does bring up one, one point. And again, I, I don't know what the, the legal issues are around this, there's a lot of that, like, I, I haven't made extensive use of Facebook, just, just a little bit of use, and, you know, I've posted a few things, but not, probably only a few dozen things over my term. And you know, I've posted a few things, but not probably only a few dozen things over my term, my terms. But having said that, it may be if Modi wants to have some control over, and it may be wise to, the social media aspect, especially if, we'll say Facebook, for instance, that's, I guess, the most common platform, most useful platform for counselors. I mean, we, we may wanna actually have an official, each of us have an official Modi Facebook page that's hosted through Modi and that there are some rules around. I think it's really hard to, because you get the crossover. And I, I'd rather do it that way, have it inside, and when I'm done as a counselor, it, it goes away. I mean, the page, you could have, you could have a migration, maybe a migration policy that, you know, certain things you'd wanna see or this type of thing that weren't offensive or weren't, but I mean, there, it would protect us. And then if there's an issue, you know, our tech support and so forth can maybe help. Because not everybody's a Facebook expert. But what I think, a lot of these questions are what you do on your own time, and I know we are counselors, but and we all have social media accounts and that type of thing, but almost impossible to really work with. But I think if we had an official page, that would, we'd be able to manage things, especially the legacy pieces like when we're done as counselors in, in terms of the organization. So that's just my initial thought. And I don't know, I, I don't know how many other councils do that, but it seems reasonable that we'd have an official Facebook page. And that, you know, as part of our communications piece, staff could help us maybe with some of those communication pieces, right? To, to drive it out through our individual channels. And, and also some of those pieces that are coming in in terms of questions, Facebook questions, that, that would, that would allow folks to, to sort of see and monitor it and, and that type of thing. Just an idea. And again, maybe it's a crazy one, but it seems, seems reasonable that we, we'd have that hosted here. And, and we could apply a policy to that, I think, easier than to personal accounts. I mean, I don't know how you manage people's personal accounts.
Counselor Nick.
Counselor Nick Hilton. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So through all these conversations, I think there's certain words that keep popping out for me. Perception, language, the language we use, respect, not like, I'm not so much into common sense because everyone's common sense is different, but just respecting each other. And I, something that hit me when Deputy Warden Cunningham was speaking was the importance of guidelines more than rules. So that it doesn't limit who we are as a counselor. And so it doesn't limit us from talking about the reasons why we are elected. We all, we are all individuals and I think there's an importance to that. And speaking to social media, personal pages versus counselor pages, I have both. But at the same time, I usually post most things to both pages. So if you limit one, if you remove the counselor page by any means, my personal page then becomes my counselor page just by perception. With COVID, Facebook was huge and texting was huge in the, at the end of the election. On the very last day, I texted and Facebooked a hundred people. So it's, social media is key and moving us forward. Yeah, moving us forward. So the importance of sharing our own events, I do like the idea of, you know, some oversight. More than just oversight, as it may help us share the events that we put on as a municipality, as a community, as a county. So getting the word out there for things like the Walk Fundy Initiative or program. It turned out to be very enjoyable and that's something that I learned through social media. I've talked about the, the respect piece, I think that's key. These pages are who we are and I think it's important to have some individuality to them. So I don't support too many rules per se. I think if we put our foot in our mouth, that's on us sometimes more than it is on the community. And I, I try to respect each and every one of you and I think it's a hard thing to police. So, thank you.
Counselor Sherry Hurlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think I said this at our last council meeting when we were talking about the priorities for policies. And I, although I do feel that these policies are important, I do think that it is imperative that Modi as a district has clear communication policies and social media policies. I know in my place of employment, we have guidelines on what I'm allowed to say on my personal page as an employee of the organization that I belong to. So I think that over and above just counselors having some guidelines, I think that it's important that Modi as a whole has guidelines on what staff and, you know, we, I think that, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is I think that the counselor communication policy and the social media policy should be included in a broader municipality communication policy and social media policy. Because even though these do apply to us specifically, there are communication policies and social media policies, parts of those that can apply to staff. You know, so if you are the director of something at the municipality and you post something on your personal social media page, does that then reflect on your employer? And I'm just kind of throwing that out there from where I, from the place of where I work. I do think that I would like to again, just kind of send my comments off to staff with a copy to counselors on some of these aspects. One thing that did strike me through the election process was my use when I, I started a separate Facebook page to try to get myself elected. And that was separate from what I now have. And I would think that it would be important in the future that if in four years' time, three and a half years' time, I am seeking election again, that that part of the process is different from what for the last four years. If it were, were to continue, my social media pages would be distinct from anything that I would be doing as offering my name. So I guess what I'm saying is that I wouldn't want as a counselor to be using my official Modi page to promote myself to be reelected. I think that that should be a separate guideline, bullet point in the policy to make sure that. And we're not just talking Facebook, you know, there are, I think that we, we date ourselves by using Facebook because the younger generation are gonna tell us that Facebook is old and only old people use Facebook. But I think any social media that we use, and we, we refer to Facebook because that's, you know, one of my main forms of communication. But I think that, you know, during the election process, it needs to be clear when I am the elected official and when I am seeking to be reelected. And I think that that's, that was a key point for me during the election, election process. And again, I'll just send my comments to everyone when I can kind of compile them in more detail. Thanks.
Thank you. Social media is, and, and we should stop referring to just one platform, Facebook. There's also others out there. There's Twitter, there's LinkedIn, there's, you name it. There's a plethora of different ones out there, but it, it should also, it should not be specifically pertaining to Facebook. But that's the prevalent one that we're all using right now. Who knows, down the road it might be Parler or something different. Should counselors be allowed to have their own social media accounts where they are clearly identified as a Modi counselor? Years ago, I, I started up a counselor account, John Cunningham Counselor District One. And it morphed into what it is now, John Cunningham, Warden Municipality District Yarmouth. This has no affiliation with the municipality and what I've found is it's placed me. I, I'm having a real hard time separating that group, because actually it is a group, it's not a page, it's a group, from my own personal page. Because I'm having a lot of trouble keeping stuff from that separate because I still am my own person. I like, lately it's been them Bernie Sanders memes that I've been putting out there. Because that's, that's who I am. It's, it's real difficult. In regards to Modi branding, I've never once used Modi branding, whether it's our logo or anything like that. I, I don't think we should be using that because that, that's a real dangerous precedent. Because sometimes we all make mistakes and it could be construed or back and forth cross between your group page and your thing. I don't personally think we should be using the Modi branding in that respect, especially on social media. It's very dangerous. Requirements for taking down pages? As soon as I'm done being a counselor, trust me, that page is coming down. But I do believe there should be.
Okay, everyone, thank you for coming back on time. So we'll move on to item 6.4, Request for Decision Municipal, Municipality District Yarmouth Strategic Plan. Who is, admin rights on these accounts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your package, you have a request for decision with respect to your strategic planning process. And the recommendation, I have a typo, the recommendation of the CEO, not the RO. Is that counsel direct the CEO to engage Group ATN in a delivery of strategic planning and communications plan development services. And in the background, you have the preamble in terms of the policy relevance. The cost will be $29,588 plus HST. And you also have the proposal that we receive from Group ATN. And there's also a summary of the procurement process.
Another policy we have, and I'm trying to think of it right now. Not the violence in the work.
So what is the wishes of council?
Yes, the code. It should, actually the code.
I'll recommend that.
I hate to add this to the staff, but maybe should reflect in there.
CEO's recommendation is circulated.
So maybe I'll just give you a chance to pause and say that, you know, this is a process. And when we're talking about policies that are this complex in nature and to some degree groundbreaking for Modi, there's gonna be a whole conversation with your legal advisors around some of these things that I've heard you talk about today.
Motion on the floor, sectioned by Counselor Lauren Kusche. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Falls underneath of that and must submit to that.
Absolutely. Counselor Sherry Hurlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I was reading through this quickly this morning, it was a 50-page document and I can by no means think that I can understand everything that is outlined in here. But when I, and I'm just scrolling through, sorry, there was a section on the timelines and I know we had two dates marked off in our calendars. And when I looked at this, it said that the RFP was, the ask was to have it finished by the end of February. But one of the dates in our counselor, or in our calendar was the beginning of March. So I'm, am I safe to assume or maybe I can have clarification from staff that our session will be next weekend, next Friday and Saturday?
So no, we have some slippage. So there was, what you received from the municipal clerk was a couple of holds on your calendar just until we saw this process unfold. So the February dates will slip. Victoria will send a note and take those holds off your calendar. Given what I think I'm hearing from council, I'll engage with Group ATN to solidify those timelines so that we can get them on your calendar. But yeah, the workshop piece will definitely now be in merge. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Is there any more discussion on that motion?
But that's about it. I think staff has a whole bunch of feedback on that.
Hearing none, all as a favor, signify by saying aye.
Like I said, we could go on that for hours.
But tree-minded.
Then the last one in here is a video conferencing.
Thank you. And I hope everyone can hear me because I've been speaking away from my microphone. Move on to item number seven, correspondence. Do you have in front of you a form of information? Letter from Karen Bauer, Safe Restart Funding and Letter from Minister of Fisheries and Potions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Probably gonna speak on communications knowledge a lot because it's an area that is near and dear to me in my professional life and you know, some of the outside organizations that I belong to. I was thinking of this council video conferencing and I would recommend that we would forward it on to the Heritage Advisory Committee. During COVID, we were able to, before I was elected, you were able to meet, you know, via Zoom and we were able to meet via Zoom afterwards. And so I'm thinking, going forward, how do we? So this is preferred, obviously, but what would happen if one of us, I don't wanna go down the rabbit hole too far. But what would happen if one of us had to isolate due to COVID? Would I then, if it was me, would I then be excluded and have to not participate in this forum because everything is now here? And I'm not asking for an answer to that today, but I think it's something that we should be discussing. If I am not able to participate because I have to be quarantined for whatever reason, does that put me at a disadvantage? Because we're now meeting face to face and is there a way, again, don't need these answers today, is there a way that a counselor who couldn't participate face to face but still able to participate, could participate in this forum? And I don't know. And it talks about, you know, the use of technology and does that put us at a disadvantage? And I think probably, in my opinion, yes, it would to some extent, but I think that, you know, technology has moved us beyond and COVID has, I think, pushed that, you know, faster than we all had anticipated. But I think there's some value in looking at how we can be accessible, not only, well, and again, not only to our counselors but also to our residents, you know, how do they listen to what we have to say? How do they hear what we have to say? How do we get that out to them? So I think video conferencing in and of itself, you know, kind of morphs into, you know, Facebook feeds and our YouTube channels and all that, you know, our tech services does for us. I think that, again, huge discussion. We could spend a day on each one of these. And I do think that staff, you know, will come back with some good recommendations, but just something to think about for me. It was, you know, what happens if I have to isolate due to COVID. That we should just refer that organization to our grant, our grant process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first comment I need to make is that we have an issue with our video conferencing from these meetings. Because what I'm understanding is that the quality of our Facebook Live is not good. And that people have difficulty hearing us. So if we're gonna, and I know we will continue because that's the thing. It's the technology we need to use today to get our information out to people. I think it's wonderful for people to be able to watch council meetings as when they're happening. I think that's for, for all of us, for residents to be able to see, you know, what, how their counselor responds and to see how we all work together as, as partners.
Moving on.
And so confidentiality in terms of in-camera.
In-camera item, there's one in-camera item.
That's a discussion on, on itself. Obviously, we know that.
MG Act 22-2, paragraph G. So I'd entertain a motion to move into camera. Moved by Deputy Wardens, seconded by Counselor Lauren Kusche, all as a favor, signify by saying aye.
Mode for those at this time.
Motion carried.
In terms of Zoom, thank goodness for Zoom because we would have had everything on hold. And we don't know from today till tomorrow what's gonna happen in our world. And so it's, I'm really thankful that we could have our meetings and move forward with, with council decisions because if we didn't have that, we couldn't. Counselors, about individual counselors participating in an in-person meeting, does it allow for full participation? Here's the issue. You know, we have these little conversations when we're in person that we have with each other, whether it be to share a laugh, like this morning, or just to, to build relationships. And so permanent, permanent video conferencing is not the way the, the future for me. I think there's a lot to be said for building social relationships and, and we come up with more ideas when we're in person and, and can share those ideas and, and discuss them. The only concerns I have about using technology, of course, is, is the confidentiality, is, you, you, what's the word I'm looking for again? Identification and people seeing us and, and knowing who we are and be able to contact us from anywhere around the world. And, and sometimes that, you know, there, there is a fear of, of that, of someone trying to take away our identification and who we are. And so there, so that's something that would concern me.
Deputy Wardens.
Deputy Wardens. Right, and again, I'll just speak generally on this. I think we need to really look at some best practices from around the country, maybe even around the world, because I think this is time those moves forward will, will increase. Video conferencing capability. I prefer, for, for some reason, it's been already discussed, in-person meetings at this, at this point. I don't think we're, we're there with the technology in terms of, of what we have here at Municipality District Yarmouth to really give the residents a, a full view of council online. I mean, the Facebook Live piece is a little bit, it's, it's good. Certainly it served its purpose in an emergency. But I really think what this needs to speak with is, is, I think the most common in the near term ask of a counselor would be, I'm away. Is, is it away, are you away one meeting? Are you out of the country for six months? Are you out of the country for six months? You know, all those other pieces. Is it, is it a committee of the whole, which committee of the whole is important, we get a lot of work done here, but, but is it, is it a vote that somebody happens to be away or they're ill? Counsel Hurlberg brought up a really good point. If you're ill in a hospital and could participate from a hospital room and there's a really important vote on amalgamation, there's, there are only seven of us, that's critical. It could happen. Let's hope not. But is that something that, that, you know, a counselor could be brought in for a particularly important vote? And I don't know how the policy would work around something like that, but those are possibilities and, and, you know, how aware is the person? Have they done, have they, have they, have they had an opportunity to do enough research to do that vote? There are all those legal questions too. I'm not certain where it goes and where you would allow that, not, but, so really I think we need a lot of research done in terms of the policy legal frame that we, we use, but I think we need to use some of it because I think as the technology becomes better, and again, the policy I think should be built to reflect changes that will happen rapidly. I mean, this video conference technologies, if, I don't think we'd ever been able to do it 10 years ago, right? So, so over the term of the next, we're early in this council, the tech and the ability to do this will look different certainly in four years' time. And is it something you want to spend a lot of money on? Is it a priority? I'm not certain is, does the, do the costs outweigh the benefits? So it all depends. So I think we've got to do a lot and I think in terms of drafting a first draft, but I think we really should keep this on the radar over a longer period of time because I would think we'd need significant policy changes year over year maybe even with regard to this. So those would be my comments.
Counselor Nick Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think if we were living in a province surrounding us right now, we would be saying that video conferencing was completely necessary or Zoom was completely necessary. So we should be investing in improving those services for us in our community. If I was our IT guy, Mike, I'd be asking for a bigger budget. And if Sherry ever was to get COVID, we'd all be isolating because, just because. So I think there, it was, there is definite need to move forward with technology. It's not going away. We should be leading, leading the group in that area if possible. So I'm all in favor of a policy on this issue and moving forward with anything and everything that Mike can bring to the table. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I do find that there is limits to this because not everybody has internet access yet. That's a big, that's a big issue out in, at least the district that I represent, District One. So in that regards, it was just only recently that I've been able to do any sort of meetings at home. And that brings up another point. I have a big concern about meetings at home and confidentiality. I usually, I don't have a quote unquote room where I could lock myself away. I most generally do my meetings in the basement, but that doesn't stop anyone from just walking in the door and overhearing the conversation. So confidentially, confidentiality in, in that respect is iffy. Telephones, I'm still, I don't know if you want to call me a conspiracy theorist, I still say there's people out there that can just grab your phone ID and just pull anything out of the air. I certainly don't like landlines, I'm, right or wrong, I'm more secure with, but when it comes to phones, every once in a while when any of you have discussions with me, I'll say, well, I don't think that should be discussed over a cellular, cellular phone. I think that's important. What do I like about the technology? I don't really. It's still new. I certainly don't like the hybrid aspect of, of these meetings. I find they're very difficult to manage, especially as a chairman. Either if we're going to do it video, do it video. If we're going to do it in person, do it in person, but then, now mind you, there is circumstances where someone cannot attend, someone given a presentation that might be across the country and it wouldn't be feasible for, I can understand that, but if it's at all possible, either in person or all via Zoom. I'm getting quite comfortable with the Zoom meetings now, but there is limitations with the Zoom because your computer screen only has so many, like safety have so many participants in there. I think it only shows, your screen only shows 12. When you get more than 12, then you have to flip back and forth to different screens. That's very difficult, especially for a chairman. There is limitations to that. Maybe we should limit that if we're going to have meetings up to X amount of people, participants that is, not observers, but participants, maybe up to X amount. Because until, no one has a big TV screen like that and the thing where you can shrink them all down and see everybody. Because some of these meetings and boards are quite large. One of them that I just, all the mayors and wardens across all the three, Shelburne, Digby and Yarmouth County, there's, I think there's what, almost 30 of us in there. And it's very, very difficult via Zoom. Mind you, the restraints with COVID and stuff, that's just some things that I wanted to point out that I have concerns with. But technology, as Deputy Warden said, is changing extremely rapidly. So who knows what it's going to be like at the end of this term or even two, two years down the road. Those are my points. So I guess to staff, do you have everything that you're looking for?
I do and I would agree that these are going to be a work in progress. There's no expectation on my part that it's going to be the type of policy work that's fairly straightforward and a straight line from A to B, but what we've got today I think is really going to help inform us to take the next steps and to continue to working on these with you and bring other advisors to your table to help you before you land on a decision.
Absolutely. If there's no more comments on that, thank you very much, Darlene.
Actually, yeah, I was just thinking that. I'm just wondering, CEO mentioned, I wondered if you'd like to take a five or 10-minute recess. So I'd entertain a motion to do a 10-minute recess and reconvene at 1:10. Moved by Counselor Sherry Hurlberg, seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. All those in favor for 10-minute recess signify by saying aye. Contrary, motion carried.
Welcome everyone, thank you for coming back on time. So we'll move on to item 6.4, request for decision, municipality District Yarmouth Strategic Planning. Madam CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your package, packages, you have a request for decision with respect to your strategic planning process and the recommendation, I have a typo, the recommendation of the CAO, not the RO, is that council direct the CAO to engage Group ATN in the delivery of strategic planning and communications plan development services. And in the background, you have the preamble in terms of the policy relevance, the cost will be $29,588 plus HST. And you also have the proposal that we received from Group ATN and there's also a summary of the procurement process.
So what is the wishes of council? Deputy Warden.
I'll recommend that we, we accept the CAO's recommendation is circulated, accept the proponent Group ATN in the amount of $29,588 plus HST for the consulting services that are outlined in the document.
All right, motion on the floor. Seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. Is there any discussion on that motion? Counselor Sherry Hurlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I was reading through this quickly this morning because it was a 50-page document and I can by no means think that I can understand everything that is outlined in here, but when I, and I'm just scrolling through, sorry, there was a section on the timelines and I know we had two dates marked off in our calendars and when I looked at this, it said that the ask, the RFP was, the ask was to have it finished by the end of February, but one of the dates in our counselor or in our calendars was the beginning of March. So I'm, am I safe to assume or maybe I can have clarification from staff that our session will be next weekend, next Friday and Saturday?
So nope, we have some slippage. So there was, what you received from the municipal clerk was a couple of holds on your calendar, just until we saw this process unfold. So the February dates will slip. Victoria will send a note and take those holds off your calendar. Given what I think I'm hearing from council, I'll engage with Group ATN to solidify those timelines so that we can get them on your calendar. But yeah, the workshop piece will definitely now be in merge.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Is there any more discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Country minded. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Move on to item number seven correspondence you have in front of you for information. Letter from Karen Bauer, Safe Restart Funding and Letter from Minister of Fisheries and Oceans. Item 7.2 for action. Letter from Communities Culture and Heritage, Re the Heritage Development Fund. Madam CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this correspondence came to municipal council and I would recommend that we would forward it on to the Heritage Advisory Committee.
Okay, someone, can we do that by consensus or would you rather have a motion?
Consensus works for me.
Yeah, consensus, consensus to move that forward? From what I see, everyone's unanimous on that. Item number 7.2.2, financial support request, Friends of the TNR. You all have that email in your package that was sent to me. I'm trying to remember the name of the person that sent it. Sharon.
Yeah, Sharon Johnson. So what is the wishes of council in regards to that email? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So basically this. Community group is doing and so I would recommend that I just work with our economic development officer and make sure that the group referred to Friends of Trap New to Release, just be contacted and make sure they're aware of our community grant program.
So what's the wishes of council? Do you wish to move forward with that recommendation? I believe Counsel Patty Dirkie, your mic is on.
Sorry, yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. My comment is in reference to something else, so can you, we'll let you tie this up first and then come back to me if that's okay?
All right, turn off your mic.
Yep.
Counselor Sherry Hurlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was thinking the same, same, along the same lines as CAO Brooks, that we should just refer that organization to our grant, our grant process. Thank you.
Okay, is that consensus of council? All on your head. Counsel Dirkie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to take note, make note of the fact that in, for information purposes, there's a letter from Karen Bauer and she had requested that her, that her email be read at our next council meeting. Do we have a policy about that?
We do not have a policy guiding that and we have never made a practice of actually reading the pieces of correspondence.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on. Financial requests is moved forward, in camera item, there's one in camera item. 8.1 that's in there because of legal under the MG, MGA Act 22-2, paragraph G. So I'd entertain a motion to move into camera. Moved by Deputy Ward, now seconded, seconded by Counselor Lauren Cushing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary, motion carried.